Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
That's a yes.
Would you please call the roll?
Garner?
Here.
Herzog?
Here.
Olstead?
Here.
Teshel?
Here.
Selagi?
Here.
Harland?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you very much. Our next order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we move on to Board and Administrative Reports, beginning with the Board President Report. I just want to share that I represented this board and this district last night at the CISA VI Board of Control Meeting. We had an update on some of the exciting things they're doing from a curricular perspective, including some updated approaches to the teaching of reading, and I hope to be able to bring more specific information to you and to the Education Committee in the future. I also wanted to share a statement. It's that time of year, for me at least, where I do a lot of reflection. And this has been a challenging and difficult year, the last 10 months at least, for many of us, because the pandemic has, the COVID pandemic, has impacted so many aspects of our lives. We know that the majority of our students and staff have been engaged in virtual learning since September. However, our English learners and our students with disabilities, along with their teachers, paraprofessionals, school custodians, secretaries, principals, and other district staff have been in our schools every day since September. On Monday of this week, January 11th, we welcomed our regular ed students and all of their teachers back into our buildings for Hybrid Learning Model Number Three. I just want to take this opportunity to thank our incredible, hardworking, and dedicated district staff, who every day are committed to the success of all of our students. And I want to acknowledge the sacrifices of our families during these last 10 months. We know it's not been easy, but I think there's reason for hope moving forward as the vaccine becomes more available and as most of us continue to practice wearing masks, watching our distances, and avoiding large crowds and washing our hands. So, thank you. With that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Cartwright for her Good News Report and Calendar Update.
Thank you very much, Dr. Harrisog. We are excited to have our students and staff back in our buildings for in-person learning. Since returning in our hybrid model on Monday, we have witnessed incredible excitement and learning in our schools. Carl Trager Elementary School recently partnered with four local businesses to provide student authors with an authentic audience. Customers at Zaroni's, Tamrose the Cake Guru, Planet Perk, and Fire Escape received copies of student writing in their purchase. Additionally, a few Carl Trager students were able to participate in a Facebook Live Author Visit with acclaimed children's author Peter Reynolds. One lucky student was even able to participate in an interview process and asked Mr. Reynolds a question. Oshkosh North Students and the Polaris National Honor Society recently handed out flyers in their neighborhoods in an effort to collect food for those in need. The students collected over 600 pounds of food in their first distribution. The Oshkosh Education Foundation recently received $100,000 from an anonymous donor. As one of the largest gifts received by the foundation, this donation will have a significant impact on the foundation's ability to support innovative programming and resources for the Oshkosh students. The foundation fuels new and innovative programming through teacher-driven funding requests that fall outside of a school's budget. Grants to teachers fund special class projects and provide special assistance to students and school programs. And on the screen, you will see just a few examples of where I have been spending my time lately. And with this, we're on transition over into our District Administrators Supplemental Reports. Mr. Kemer, if you will please come provide us with a COVID-19 update.
Good evening, everyone.
Welcome.
Like most weeks, I'm going to begin my report by providing a summary of the Winnebago County Data Summary that comes out on a weekly basis from the Health Department. Now, if you've been paying attention to our meetings, that report really touches on two key indicators that we cover. The first is the overall case rate for the geographic boundary of our school district, and the other is the burden status, which directly relates to the case rate, but it gives us an indication of the amount of spread that is occurring within our community. So, for this most recent two-week period, which runs between December 23rd and January 5th, the burden status for our geographical district boundary was in the high category, and the case rate was about 350 cases per 100,000. So, the good news is that that's continuing to trend down. If you remember back in November, that's when we reached our peak, and we were well over 1,000 cases per 100,000, which was in the critically high range. So, hopefully, that's a trend that continues. I know the Health Department is really monitoring close to see if we have a post-holiday spike. We didn't really see much of a spike after the Thanksgiving holidays, so hopefully, we see something similar this time around, but it's still a little bit too early to tell for sure. So, one of the things that we also do is we calculate the burden status for individual grade levels within our district. And just as a reminder, the Health Department, in their report, has the case rate and burden status for individual age groups. We calculate our own just because we use exclusively OESD students. So, with that, for this most recent period, for the grade levels three through five at the elementary level, the burden status was in the moderately high range. For grades K-2, and also at the middle school level, the burden status was in the high range. And then finally, at the high school level, the burden status was in the very high range. So, and if you remember from our matrix presentation, those burden status levels correlate to our matrix. So, moving on from there, one piece of really good news that we got this week is that we started to vaccinate some of our health staff. So, the state of Wisconsin put out criteria for those individuals that can be vaccinated, and right now, Group 1A is how they're referring to it, but it really encompasses healthcare workers, as well as individuals who work in long-term care facilities. So, that includes our school nurses, our health assistants, and some of our therapists. So, for instance, our speech pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists. So, it is optional. We had a large group that took part today, and the hope is that we can continue to have our 1A staff vaccinated in the days ahead, and that we move on to 1B at some point in the near future, too. And we're thinking that the 1B staff will include, or the 1B group will include all of our district staff members. So, it's something to look for in the coming weeks. As a reminder, there are a number of COVID testing options that we're utilizing as a district. The University of Wisconsin Oshkosh has their testing site set up. It was closed down for a little bit over the holiday break, but that is up and running again. And again, that is available to any staff member, student, or family member in the district. And then, we also utilize the CISA VI Testing Center for select staff members. And then finally, as another reminder, our COVID dashboard is also active on our district website. That just tracks the number of positive cases that we currently have in the district at each school, for both students and staff, and the number of quarantines that we currently have, as well as cumulative totals for both of those measures. So, this is an update, this was last updated on January 7th, and at that time, since the start of the year, we've had 542 confirmed cases among our students and staff, and that has contributed to 3,972 quarantines since the start of the year. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemer. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs.
Quick question, but I just wanted to make sure. It is free to get a test at UWL, correct? There's no charge for students, staff, and families of the district, correct?
Correct. And just to clarify, the testing that they do is the antigen test, so the results come back fairly quick. If somebody has symptoms or is considered a close contact, I believe they can request a PCR test as well, and that takes two to five days to come back, but it's a little bit more reliable.
Thank you.
At the same facility as well? They can come back right away, within 15, 20 minutes after their test? Are you able to get the PCR test done?
Yep.
I also have a question. And it may be more for the County Health Department. I don't know if this is just a conversation to have. I wonder if it's possible through our contract tracing, or through the county health contract tracing, to get data on whether or not COVID is spread at school? So, we know that we've had almost 4,000 quarantines and 500-plus cases, but do we know that when positive cases show up at our school that they're causing spread? Is there a way for us to track data on that?
So, there, some cases are easier to track than others. So, in some instances, we can be pretty certain where that case came from. When we were in hybrid way back at the beginning of the school year, relatively, I think actually all of the cases that we were seeing were coming from outside of school.
Yes.
And for a lot of districts and schools that have been in session, that's largely what they see. There's very little spread within schools, very little transmission. But it's really impossible, in some instances, to know for sure, you know, where it's coming from.
That's, I've spoken with someone who was quarantined from three different contacts. So, yeah, I can see where it would be difficult to know exactly where it's coming from, but I know it's in a different state. But my brother's a principal, and he said that they were given that specific data, so I just wondered if it was possible for us. I know we're overwhelmed in our county, and that makes a difference. It was just an idea I wanted to bring up and discuss. I think whenever we make decisions, and we can point to the data for why they're being made, it's helpful, so.
Yeah, and our nurses do a great job in investigating cases, and that is one thing that they try to figure out, too. You know, if there is some evidence that it could have been, you know, from another student or a staff member, that's something that they would document, just so we're aware.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kemer? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And for your report.
And if I may, Dr. Harrisog, I do have Dr. Gunlock, Ms. Perron for the open enrollment report.
Very good.
Do you guys want to wipe it down? Do you want to wipe it down first, or?
Okay, thanks. The open enrollment, a written report that you have with you is the same one that you, it's virtually the same report we bring every January. By state law, we have to, thank you, we have to indicate if we're going to deny open enrollment to anyone, whether it be for regular ed, or as Linda will talk about in terms of special ed, we have to be able to articulate that in the written report that you have in front of you. It hasn't changed for regular ed. We accept everyone. We do have some class size limits that we have used for years. One thing that we did differently, I think, two, maybe a little bit more, maybe three years ago, is we changed that if we do allow you in to open enrollment, we can move you from school to school. So, if more kids move into a given school's attendance area, they get to take precedent, but we still offer you an open enrollment seat at our next closest school. We've not had to use that. In fact, I don't know if we've ever had to use that, but it's still there to help us load balance. So, from a regular ed standpoint, we say yes to everyone. We will find a space for you. As far as special ed, I'll ask Linda.
For the majority of special ed students as well, we accept everyone we can service, but as an example, right now, there is a shortage in vision teachers and orientation and mobility. And so, when we max out with a licensed vision teacher, it would not be right to accept them because we could not implement the IEP. There are rare exceptions, and the only thing different this year in the report is we are looking at working capacities specific to schools. Parents do have the right to request a certain school, and we want to be very open and honest upfront and tell them, we cannot meet your child's, you know, IEP needs at this school, so we're going to do working capacity, working with regular ed numbers, making sure that we can ensure the least restrictive environment when students do come into our district.
Just a clarifying question. What are the dates for the open enrollment period? Or what is the open enrollment period?
That's a really interesting question, because in this state, there are certain dates that they set, but those are somewhat irrelevant, because they passed a law that said they can, they can request at any time if there is a student pressing need. So, we get them all year long.
Year-round.
Year-round, no. It kind of reminds me of the way our out-of-attendance used to be when I first started here. There was a set hard date that if you didn't do it by a certain time, we weren't going to consider you till next year. We realized it was, A, was much better customer service to do it all year long, and it's a win-win situation anyways, so.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Dr. Gunlock, and Ms. Perron.
And with that, if I could ask Mr. Nihans to please come up to talk about our first bond offering for the referendum financing.
Hello, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I am going to give the board an update here. We are getting ready to make our first offering for the referendum bonding. Remember, we're going to do three offerings for this, so this is the first offering, and we're going to be closing on January 27th. So, the first offering is going to be for $65 million, and it's going to fund the safety, the infrastructure, and the beginning portion of the new middle school buildings. So, with that, a little bit about, I'll give you a little bit of information that I know right now. We just kind of got everything settled earlier today. So, Michelle will be here from PMA at the end of the month to, with the closing documents, and she'll be able to give you a little bit more of the details of what it is, but I want to give you an update on what to expect. So, when we were originally getting ready for the referendum, we were projecting out that we would be seeing interest rates for this bond offering of 3.5%. Right now, we're getting ready to lock in at 2%.
Nice.
So, we had a significant savings there, which is good. Again, I don't have what the total interest savings is going to be over the life of this. Michelle will be able to have that calculation for you when we actually close and set that actual interest rate of what that's going to be. But just to give you an update, or just a projection, so right now, the layered-in mill rate impact that we're looking at is going to be 40 cents the first year, 63 cents the second year, and then 70 cents for every other year following that. Where pre-referendum, we were looking at 48 cents, 70 cents, and 85 cents for the remainder. So, at the very least, we're looking at, from year three through the 20th year, of a 15-cent savings every year from that. We still have two more bond offerings, even though they're going to be a little bit smaller, we're still going to have two more opportunities to even bring that down a little bit more. So, we got a really good first, first offering here. We're very excited about the kind of savings we're going to have, and the opportunity to be able to lock in a little bit larger chunk than what we were first looking at, and having a better impact for the community on this. So, does anyone have any questions?
That's great news. It's a great interest rate.
Yes.
It is.
It is.
Very good. Well, thank you for your hard work on all of that.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Nihans.
Thank you.
And with this, we'll transition over into a little bit of a different approach as far as a supplemental report is concerned, but this is for the Oshkosh Area School District COVID-19 Response. As we begin here, we do want to acknowledge some of the partnerships that we have had over the course of this past, well, since March, as you might say, just to give notice and credit to those individuals. This has truly been a valuable partnership in order to help the district remain informed and in order to guide decisions as we've been navigating through COVID-19. The school district has, up all the way up until this point, has been participating in weekly and bi-monthly meetings with a variety of governmental, medical, as well as fellow superintendent colleagues or people service directors across the Fox Valley region. So, for example, the first, first one you'll see is from the Fox Valley COVID-19 Weekly Meetings. So, this occurs every Wednesday, with the exception of some holidays that were built in there. And included in that group, I think, was very important to know who actually participates in that group, because I know we've received questions, are you listening to doctors? And yes, we are. Comprised within this, within this group is not only the Fox Valley School District Superintendent, but it is also all of the Fox Valley Health Department leaders, and it also includes ThetaCare doctors and their leaders. So, for example, Dr. Andrabi from ThetaCare. And then Frank Mellon is one of their individuals that deals a lot with statistical projections and is able to take the data and help us have an understanding within the region of how COVID is acting within our region, and positivity rates, projective rates, hospitalization rates, those, that type of information for us. Also, the Oshkosh Area School District participated, it was either weekly or bi-monthly with the Oshkosh Area COVID-19 Call, and this is important to know who was, who was involved with that. So, not only was, if it was not these people directly, it was representatives from these individuals that would be on this call. So, you would have Mike Stanley, for example, from the Oshkosh Fire Chief, Dean Smith from the Oshkosh Police Chief, John Motts from the Winnebago County Sheriff. But then we started getting into medical personnel as well. So, Carmel, we had Dr. Newman, Mark Roloff was also there, of course, Dr. Levitt, and Trent Martin from UWU, Tracy Forlent, who's from the Fox Valley Healthcare Emergency Readiness Coalition, and then, of course, from, from the Winnebago Health Department, we had Doug Guerin and Linda Coleman that also participated on those calls. And again, within these updates, providing us what's the impact that we are experiencing within the Oshkosh community, and what are some potential projections that were coming? Not as much, but it was more of, here's the trend and what we're headed for based off that trend. Additional partners with that was through the Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Center. This was through our weekly and bi-monthly meetings, and these were actually partnership meetings. And so, this would, of course, have various business partners. The Health Department had representatives that attended there, as well as oftentimes a variety of local hospital leaders that would attend there, that meeting as well. And again, it's facilitating the communication amongst our business, business owners and partners as to what was going on related to COVID impacts and potential, what we were looking towards in the future as well. And then, of course, we had two individuals that we worked closely with from the Winnebago County Health Department on a regular basis. Now, there were, there are multiple other people out there, so I want to do that, give as much credit as credit is due. But we're very appreciative with Doug Guerin, as well as Julio Solomon. And I think that's very important, again, and these, just so the board is aware, these were my two primary contacts, personally, as your superintendent, fulfilling the role of superintendent for the Oshkosh Area School District. We also, of course, had many partners through CISA VI. We also had received a lot of information from the Wisconsin Association of School District Administrators, and that was as scheduled. Usually, that was on a monthly basis, sometimes more frequently. The Department of Public Instruction also would give us usually monthly updates, sometimes more frequently as needed. And what's important between the WISD and DPI is that they also included the State Department of Health Services personnel on various agendas in order to ensure that we were getting as much information in a timely manner as possible. And then lastly, our public health school nurses, they have a weekly meeting. This is through the Winnebago County Health Department, and so, again, we're just very appreciative for the partnerships that had that, because we wanted to, we want to give credit to a lot, and there are others, but these are the ones that were our main individuals that we worked in collaboration with. And yes, as you can see, it did include medical doctors. We also know that there was an outstanding question that has been out there, and we wanted to try to give a little bit of closure to the question that has been provided to us. So, the whole purpose of this is not necessarily to look backwards, but to be able to provide some closure. The question was related to the decision-making related to November 3rd and the November 9th communications that went out. As you know, on the afternoon of November 3rd, the district released a communication saying that we were looking at a transition decision in order to go into the hybrid instruction. This was, as, the key factors that were considered in making that decision was access to data that we had not had prior to that point in time. So, we usually, as you know, on Thursdays, get updates from the Health Department. From that Thursday, moving forward, we had received access to specific student information, and that's when we were able to start, as you heard from Mr. Kemer, report out, being able to calculate our own burden rates within the district itself, based on district enrollment and district students. And we were also, we even fine-tuned that to only consider those who would be in person, and we even took out our e-Academy students from that. We had, we had an expanded contact tracing process. This is at the point where we had started doing cross-training to staff members in order to be able to increase our capacity in order to conduct contact tracing. There was increased testing capacity for staff, and then, we also, there was, we started to have an increase in our ability to staff schools amid required staff quarantine periods. So, our substitute teacher pool was starting, it wasn't where it needed to be, but it was starting to gear towards that direction. And then, of course, lastly, the decision was made in consultation with the Winnebago County Health Department and with the district following the latest recommendation. From December, from that announcement that occurred on November 3rd, starting on November 4th at the state level, we started seeing daily new records on the amount of COVID-positive cases. This had not been, that pattern had not been previously seen, you know, prior to the announcement on November 3rd. And so, then the announcement on November 9th, some of the key factors that were considered in order to remain in virtual is because there was a significant increase in the daily rate for COVID-19 cases, along with multiple daily record-setting positive cases in Wisconsin since November 3rd. There was a shift in the trends, including our county's positivity rate, our local community's burden rate, and data specific to the Oshkosh Area School District students and staff. We also understood the impact of a potential expected holiday travel and understood, keenly understood that typically, we would not look at state numbers, but given that this was a holiday period, and people, you know, would not be staying local just inside of Oshkosh, just as we knew that there were people from outside of Oshkosh coming in and people within Oshkosh going out, that was something that was taken into consideration. And then, the feedback that we had received to the importance of consistency in learning models and schedules, and the impact that would have on student learning and overall well-being. And we received a lot of communication related to that from constituents. So, it'd be a variety of different constituents, so that would be from your parent community and others. And so, that was the rationale between the two decisions and, and the timing related to that. As we're going back, and we are transitioning into hybrid model at this point in time, we did want to go over some of the high level, this is not detailed level, just high level of what are some of the safety protocols that we are implementing right now in order to minimize COVID-19 spread within the district. We do continue to require mask-wearing. Of course, there are accommodations made for very unique situations, and even then, we're looking for what are other type of barriers that are recommended in order to utilize. We do have the Daily Health Screener Questionnaire. Not only are we asking for parents to do this for children who are not able to do it for themselves, but also the students and staff members, they're to be completing this on a daily basis. We, of course, keep our social distancing expectations. We're looking for six-foot distancing to the best of your ability at all times. We do realize that there are times for which that cannot be accomplished. There'll be times where you may be transitioning between periods in the hallways, and so that's a perfect example. The good news is, it is passing. We're going to keep you moving. We're not going to allow you to stand around and just chit-chat with one another in order to minimize any type of exposure. We do have the desk barriers. That is in place, so that when we are not able to do six-foot distancing, they are still required to wear the masks, but the desk barriers do provide some protection when we are not able to do that social distancing, or when students are eating, because obviously the masks are off at this point in time. And so, again, we're trying to put in- And so again, we're trying to put in additional barriers. We do have ongoing cleaning during the school day. We do have barriers in some of our high-traffic areas such as our lunch lines, office areas, health office areas. We have of course our nightly cleaning of our school facilities. Ventilation modifications have been made in order to ensure that we're using the right filters. Our hand sanitations, availability for our students throughout the school. Usage of water bottles and no water fountain or bubblers. In other words, they're only to fill up your water bottle, but you, not to be able to be able to drink from. We have limited use of lockers. And then restructuring of some of our common area usage again to prevent the stopping and, and the talking that are happening.
Just, just a quick comment. I, I think it's important to acknowledge the donations that the district has received. I know from one of the local churches and another organization of, of water bottles, which were then sanitized by our food service personnel so that if students don't have water bottles when they return, this would be an opportunity for them to obtain one without cost.
And we also had the opportunity to get lanyards. So when our students are outside playing, they can hook their masks to them so we don't lose them. So that's another thing that we, something that's been provided to the district for our student usage that we are very appreciative of. For after-school programming, this seems to be a common question that we are getting is, you know, hey, what's going on with after-school? You know, so the Oshkosh Area School District does have nine CLC sites at the elementary and middle school level. It's through the lighted schoolhouse program as well as our Milt program. The after-school programming in partnership with the Boys and Girls Club as well as the YMCA are at the other elementary sites. As we transition into in-person instruction, those programs continue to provide services to our students. While we are in hybrid learning, students can access the after-school program on the days that they attend school in person. When we return back to five days a week in-person instruction, they'll be able to access those programs any day as previously provided in the non-pandemic environment. And of course, the safety protocols that we do have in place during the school day do carry over into our after-school programs. Wanted to give you an update as well towards the work that we've been able to accomplish related to our substitute teachers and the substitute teacher pool. If you recall previously, I had explained to you that our substitute teacher pool had dramatically decreased and we were being very innovative and trying to increase that pool. So our expanded efforts included recruiting individuals. We created a collaboration with UWO for students and staff. Of course, their availability is dependent upon their schedule, but we do have now UWO individuals that are coming, that are available within our substitute pool. We also did training of our current Oshkosh Area School District paraprofessional staff who met the required criteria and volunteered to become a substitute teacher. We looked at the inclusion of, inclusion of need and method to apply and for our district newsletters, our social media, our website. So we're trying to real, push out a large net to individuals to say, please apply, we have a need and here's, here's the process. We've also shared the advertisement with our Greater Oshkosh Economic Development Center partners, specifically the Fox Valley Workforce Development Board, because they're looking to employ individuals. And so it was a nice match, as you might say. Currently, where we are right now, and these are approximate numbers, so we, we have approximately 109 individuals in our substitute teacher pool. We currently have approximately 10, 10 individuals that are in process of completing their, their application. And just for comparison purposes, prior to COVID-19, we had approximately 160 individuals available within that pool. So we are not where we previously were, but we are definitely making headway in that direction. And again, we're very, very appreciative to our partners on this for helping us in order to recruit as well as for those individuals who have applied and are willing to come in as substitutes. At our last board meeting, Ms. Gardner, you had requested or said, I want to have a better understanding of what this matrix is. And so we're breaking it down a little bit in order to get a little bit further into the weeds. It's still going to be a high-level overview, but I think it will address a lot of the questions that you had previously. We had revised an instructional model matrix with our goal ultimately being where it has a little bit more predictability for people to be able to kind of see where are we headed, what's going on. And it is comprised of two main components. And this is where I think there may be some confusion that is out there. The first component is, was known as the main indicator and the second component being related to the secondary indicator. And the main indicator, in addition to that, we also outlined for us the burden rate. So that way you knew what the actual description is. This is directly from the, the definition from the health departments that's being used all across the state of Wisconsin at this point. And the matrix actually relies specifically when we're on that main or the primary area, it relies on the Oshkosh Area School District boundary burden. So it is not the Winnebago County Health Department, not Winnebago County burden rate. It is specific within the Oshkosh Area School District boundaries. And it does look at the number of positive cases per 100,000 residents, 100, yes, 100,000 residents within our geographic boundary. And it is always looking at two weeks' worth of data. So when a report comes out from the Health Department, it's, it goes backwards for two weeks to be included in that. Again, this is primarily used in the main indicator and at the grade, grade band decisions at the secondary indicator levels, it talks about burden rates here, but the calculation is slightly different at the secondary level. Again, specifically at the, the, the main indicator, and this is kind of important because the main indicator is what is used to make district-wide decisions. In other words, 4K all the way up to 12th grade. You know, so it's, it's a huge transition as, as talking about the entire district. We are currently in hybrid because we are currently within the Oshkosh Area School District boundary. We're in high right now as far as our burden rate is concerned. So that is why we are currently in the hybrid. However, if, so as you've heard from Mr. Kamer, that our trend is, that we are trending downward. So when we get to that overall burden rate of moderately high, what we do at that point in time is once we have three consecutive weeks' worth of reports. So let's say it comes out tomorrow hypothetically, that is moderately high, and then the following week is moderately high, then the following week after that is moderately high, then that's going to signal that for the entire organization in Tampa, together, we are going to transition into in-person instruction, five days a week or Model 2 with safety protocols in place. So that's, that's what we're looking at in order to make district-wide decisions as we go forward. When we look at our secondary indicator, this is a little bit different because what we're doing is we're still looking at the burden rate for overall. However, this is where we are now calculating this at the grade band levels. As you heard Matt, Mr. Kamer referring earlier, where he said, we look at kindergarten through second grade, third grade through fifth grade, sixth grade through eighth grade, and ninth grade through 10th grade, 12th grade, excuse me. And what we're doing is we're taking, we're grouping that is within the Oshkosh Area School District students only. And so we're calculating those burden, burden rates based off our enrollment, local, they're coming to school in person, students. And so when we're looking at that, as you can see, we're looking at grade level, those grade level bands I'm talking about. And then school and classroom considerations. Originally, when we designed this, the school and classroom considerations were put in play in the event that we had portions to where students may not be success. We have a case, maybe that's in a, in a classroom and pretty much your entire classroom's having a quarantine at this point in time. So we need to revert to temporarily transition into Model 4. We're able to do that until it's safe for that classroom to come back. It may be due to staffing. It may be that something's going on specifically within a staffing element that's happening and so we have to transition. But it's a temporary, it's not meant to be, we're going to Model 4 and staying in Model 4. It's a temporary transition. But as you can see, some of the things that are taken into consideration is staffing availability. The second bullet is where we're taking a look at the, the number of positive cases and quarantines in our individual schools and classrooms. And then that grade level burden status, which is what I was talking about with the grade bands that are in there. Due to limited testing in this indicator, that grade level burden, we're not able to do that with our 4K or pre-K students, only because testing just doesn't occur for younger than, than five typically unless there's a significant need. So in addition to the model matrix, we're, I'm going to have Ms. Neiman click on the link here. We update this on Mondays and on Thursdays so that people are aware on our dashboard. And this is where you heard Mr. Kamer referring to how many positive cases or how many quarantines are having to occur. And as you will see, it's listed out by school. Ms. Neiman, if you can scroll down. And the first set is related to our students, the second set is related to our staff, and then the third set of numbers is cumulative for the entire school year. So the very first column is the number of COVID positive cases for students. The second column is the number of students having to quarantine or isolate. So it may be a close contact or because they're COVID positive. The third column being specific for positive cases for staff members. And then the fourth column, positive, not positive, but the number of staff members having to quarantine at that particular school, either again, due to being in a close contact or some other reason and having to quarantine. And then the second to the last column is the total number of positive cases. And then the last column being the total number of quarantines since the beginning of, since the beginning of the school year, September 1st. So that provides you with a variety of different pieces of information.
I have a quick question. For the staff, for active cases, it's just to that particular school? What about, so how does it, so how would you go on there and put on there like a nurse that is at four schools or a counselor that is at two schools or a gym teacher that goes back and forth? Like where do they get on there? Are they on their double then or are they on there so many times? Are they on there once? Like how do we, how do we do other programming in district staff wide? Is that on the bottom so they would be on there?
Let me find out for a moment, if you don't mind. I'm going to ask Mr. Kamer to come back.
Yeah. Just so that we know because, so I, I see that it has on the bottom the other, the non-school staff, but, or alternate education programs. But that doesn't include nurses or counselors or speech therapists or those that travel between schools?
If you can give me just a moment, I'll find, I'll make sure we get you an answer.
Okay.
I wonder if they'd be up on the district totals then, yeah?
So if I'm reading this correctly, so like July, or January 11th, so if West High School had four active cases and then 30 student active cases?
Uh, 30 quarantines. So they're not necessarily positive. They may have to be quarantined due to a close contact.
Okay. So my other question, I'm just making sure I read this correctly. So then the positive cases are the combined number of students and?
All right. So the first set, so your first two sets, your students' active cases and your staff active cases as are, that's what you have today. The last set of numbers is just a cumulative total for the entire school year. So in other words, the four that are listed there as far as positive cases right now for students are going to be, are also an accumulative.
Okay. So are these, this is from, this is updated daily?
No. This is updated on Mondays and Thursdays.
Okay. I'm asking because I know a couple of students at West were exposed and are now on quarantine from the very first day of school. So I'm trying to see like if we're tracking that.
And we'll have that updated information available tomorrow.
So we'll know tomorrow.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Kamer, the question on the table is for staff who report to multiple school sites, where do, where are they, you know, for example, maybe a nurse that's responsible for two schools, where does their data get reported?
So even staff members who have multiple schools, there's always one school that's designated as their home school.
Okay.
So depending on where their home school is, that's the school that they would be counted toward.
But so if we have one staff member, let's say at Washington, it actually could affect two other schools, but it's not going to show on here?
Right. We, we don't want to duplicate the number of places.
Right. Obviously.
So while we would still put that on our log for that school, we color code it a little bit differently so we know that's not the home school for that staff member. So they would, on this, on this dashboard, they would only count toward their home school.
Okay.
But the, the quarantines would show up?
Well, that, so it may show zero for one school, but the quarantines might be up from a different staff, from a different school coming in. Well, from anybody, yeah. Okay. That's all I want, just wondering. Thank you.
I'm confused by that. Please pardon me.
Nope.
The last portion you were talking about with the quarantines?
So let's say a teacher tests positive, it's going to show up at their home school, correct? That's where the data is going to be put. But let's say they work at two different schools and when they found out that they were positive, they found that there was close contacts at these two other schools.
Other sites, correct.
At these other sites. And so those sites would then show those close contacts or quarantines in their numbers.
That is correct.
Yep. Yep. Okay.
So I have a few questions. On the matrix, in the beginning, you said that we were going to be making decisions district-wide on the main indicator based on two weeks' worth of data. Based on three reports, each report contains two weeks of data.
So six weeks?
No. So for example, last week, which was the first week, contained two weeks of data.
Okay.
The report that's going to come out tomorrow will have this week and last week's. So there's a duplicate week in there.
Okay.
Okay. So that will be report number two. And then next week's report that comes out will include this week's and next week's report in it. There are three reporting cycles.
Okay. But essentially what you're looking for, I think, is three weeks' worth of data. And if those three weeks show either same or decreasing, well, it would have to be decreasing or increasing. In order to change, you'd have to either see an increase or decrease over three weeks.
In order to, in order for us to go into Model 2, what we would have to do is we would need, for district-wide, we would have, we, look, I'm giving you hypotheticals, not actuals, okay? So let's say hypothetically, last week, the Oshkosh Area School District burden rate was moderately high. It falls in that category moderately high. Tomorrow's comes out and it is in the category of moderately high again.
Okay.
And then next week, it comes out and it says is in the moderately high category again. We now have three weeks of reports.
Okay. So it is three weeks.
That show moderately high.
Okay.
And then at that point in time, we will be looking to transition into Model 2, which is five days a week.
Okay.
So that's the hypothetical.
Got it.
And what you're hearing about the decreasing and that kind of stuff, that's, that's the actual, the rate number, not the category. We're talking about category.
We're just going to, okay. Good clarification. So then my thought is, can we take that category and put it on the dashboard so that I don't have to remember what we talked about tonight? I can just look on the dashboard and see where we are. Does that make sense?
Certainly.
Because it's, it's still complicated. And it's complicated, I'm not saying that it's not. However, how can we continue to simplify this thing down and have one place, like a one-stop shop where I can just go and be like, man, we got two weeks at moderately high, come on, Oshkosh, we can do one more and then we get to flip into Model 2.
Correct.
So that was a thought I had.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd ask that the administration look at the numbers for our schools, for our, our COVID data, for our schools that we have. Can we look at that not as an entire school district decision? Can we look at that? Because if I kind of go back and look at those numbers, they're almost, we're lower than the high or the high, because the way, and I could be totally off on this, but the way that I'm looking at these numbers as just Oshkosh, and I know we should look at a whole, the whole picture of COVID burden rate in our community, but if we're looking at just our schools, I'm wondering if we could even get our elementary kids back into school on January 25th full-time, five days a week? And then look at secondary by like February 1st, if not January 25th? Is that something that, am I way off on this or can we like have it? Is that something that, am I way off on this, or can we like have administration actually look at just those? Because our numbers, we have zero, 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 and our kids are just going back to hybrids. So I'm wondering if we could look at that, or how we feel about that?
I agree. I had the same thought. I wish that we just looked at our specific data. I know when you gave your report, you did say just our specific data for three through five is moderately high, but the county data is high. I would prefer that we just look at ours. I agree with what you're saying.
How do the rest of you feel about that?
Yes.
If I may, for clarification? So you're saying, looking at this on a school-by-school basis? Because, for example, with the grade bands, the kindergarten through two right now is high.
Uh-huh.
It's not moderately high. But what I'm hearing you say is that you're wanting to look at this school-by-school?
Well, she said she's looking at the different elementary schools, and there's zeros. Nobody has it.
There are a lot of zeros.
And so that's where like the disconnect between these categories, the Health Department, and then our internal numbers, they're really far apart. And so then you wonder, if nobody's got it, why can't my kids go back to school? I think that's the question that we're being asked a lot.
Right, yeah. So, according to these numbers, and these are Mondays updates, for elementary school, we have five positive cases. So are we looking at those numbers as far as like the moderate, like are we putting these into the moderately high, the high, you know, those different categories? Are we doing that among our own schools? Or are we always looking at the entire district, on where the whole district is? Can we split that up? Is that, is that?
One of the hard things when you're looking at burden rates, so the reason why we go back two weeks when we calculate the burden rate is because there's a standardized way of doing it. And that's not just our Health Department, that's across the country, so.
Okay.
The standardized way is to look back at two weeks, look at the case count per population, the number per population, and then multiply that by 100,000. So you're looking at the number of cases per 100,000.
Okay.
And that gives you the, the case rate, which then corresponds to the burden rate. The challenge you come into when you're looking at individual schools is the sample size is so small, that even if you have one case, that burden rate is gonna be higher above. Does that make sense?
Right.
So, it wouldn't really make sense to calculate the burden rate for each individual school. You know, even when we look at our K2 and our 3-5 data.
Okay.
Even though the, the overall population for those grade levels is about 1,500, that's still relatively small sample size, so when we have two or three cases, we're already starting to get into those, you know, borderline high categories. So, we do look at the case count, but one of the things to remember too is that it is really random when cases show up in schools. So, even though there are a lot of schools where there aren't cases now, it doesn't mean there won't be any cases next week or the week after. So, that's one of the challenges, if you're trying to figure out, okay, well, we haven't had a case in a school for a number of weeks now, could we open it back up? If you're basing it on having no cases, you could run into a challenge where all of a sudden you open up, now you have a case, are you gonna wanna go back into a different model? Because you have one case, and then what does that mean for other schools that may have a case that aren't five days a week? So, you just have to use some caution in terms of, if you're using the individual case count at a school, you don't have a defined threshold, it becomes difficult to figure out and maneuver between those, those categories.
Mrs. Salaji?
Well, I was gonna say, and I understand what you're saying to be, even if we did use the threshold, some of our schools have less than 350 students and staff. And so, if one of them got it, that would put them into the high.
Correct.
So even if we did use the threshold at the schools, which I agreed with you as you said that, that makes sense, it would create a lot of transitioning that would be difficult to manage. See? So it makes sense, and then you hear this, and that makes sense too.
I think the approach, it sounds like what you guys have done is said, okay, look, we're gonna do burden for the whole district. We're gonna use the community, and we use our, you know, attendance area. That's where we, that's our starting point. And then from there, we can, you know, dial in, in each population, we'll have a teacher here, and a kid here, and a school, and a class, and, and that's where we can play, you know, shuffle them around. But as a district, that's what I'm hearing you say.
Yeah. And, you know, it all comes down to risk tolerance. And how much risk are you willing to tolerate as a district and as a community? And when we created the matrix, we really did it with the thought in mind that when the rate of spread is high in the community, there's higher risk to do just about anything in the community, whether it be go to a restaurant, go to a bar, go to school. So, you listen to infectious disease doctors, you listen to public health professionals, and they repeatedly say, you know, when you look at schools, the safest time to return is when community spread is low. So, that's one of the, the risk tolerance pieces you have to look at is community spread, and that's why we tied it to that part of the matrix. The other thing to consider is, you know, anytime you're putting more humans in a confined space, the risk increases as well. And that's for obvious reasons. I mean, if, if you have more people in one space, it's harder to social distance. While we do have mitigation measures in place, the more people you have in a building, the less effective those mitigation measures become. So, you know, when we're creating this, you know, we had to really estimate what that risk tolerance was gonna be. And when you look at the way the Health Department has kinda laid it out, it, it just seemed like a, a natural threshold was that high level, and anything below that. And you, you look at different standards across the nation, not everybody uses the exact same rubric that the Health Department does, but in general, if you look at some of the information from the CDC, they categorize it based on the case count. And, and generally, there's a threshold right around that 100 cases per 100,000 mark. So I mean, it, we didn't pick a number out of a hat, that just seemed to be a more standardized threshold for having that, that decision point of going back to Model 2.
Mr. Peshal?
Sure. So, you guys made me all anxious for a minute there, because I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to provide my opinion on whether we should go back at a certain date or not.
Well, I wasn't asking for that. I was just asking for the administration to look at these numbers, and to maybe relook at this a little bit, to get us back into school. Because when you look at these numbers, it's really hard to, why are we not in school?
Sure.
So I was just asking for administration to look at it, not to make a decision.
Well, that's, that's fine, but when you said dates, it started making me feel anxious about it, because I, I know that's, that's what a certain segment of our community would like us to do. They want us to give us a drop, they want us to give a drop dead date of when we're going back.
Well, you're.
And that's, and I don't think that's the intent of, of what the conversation is here today. But I think the intent of this conversation is to, is to start easing the community back into it, and saying, this is where we feel we need to get, this is where our numbers are. And if, and if I'm correct, if I'm, if I'm understanding and listening and reading correctly, if we have a third week at moderately high within certain age groups, that is just, that discussion of going back to school in a, in a, in a, in a option of, option two, gets closer to being on, on the table. And that's, and that's really not that far away.
That's what this date is.
Correct.
Right.
So, so the, the idea here is, is that we're, we're communicating that we're actually, we feel like we're getting comfortable and getting there, to doing that. And so, and I, and I think that's, I think that's the uplifting part of this, is that we're getting to that moderately high point within some of our schools. Not all of our schools, but some good sections of our, of our schools within our, within our community. And, and that's what I've heard from tonight's presentation, is that there's some age groups in schools that are really, really close, there's some that we might have some concerns about, you know? And we're entertaining those conversations right now about taking those steps to, you know, going into, you know, Model, Model 2. And potentially keeping some in, still in Model 3 as well, or Model 4, if the numbers support that. So, and that's our, that's our main and our secondary determinations of how we, of how we go about doing that. And that's, and I think another way of looking at this is that we're not just in the, in the main area of making that decision. There's still some secondary levels there that we have to keep our eyes on. So, it's a more balanced message of where we're, of where we're at. Are we better off than where we were in November and December? Yes. Are we quite there yet? Not close. Not, not all the way. So, my, my opinion, so.
Mrs. Olmsted?
Well, I have a question. So we know on Monday, the first day back, that a lot of students were in contact, I don't know how many, so I shouldn't say a lot, some students, okay? We know that some students were in contact, and are now quarantined from the first day, right? What we don't know is how were they exposed? Because if they were in their classroom, they're separated, and there's plexiglass, and they're, you know, how are they exposed in their classrooms? And then when we call them, we don't tell them how, because we can't say where they were exposed, or where the contact occurred, or who the contact, what classroom it was in, everything. So the confusion that I'm seeing now is parents saying, I don't know how my child was in direct contact with someone, because they were in their classrooms, they're distant, and, you know, we can't tell them because of the HIPAA rules who had it.
If I may?
Please, please.
There are activities for which students engage and for which we do not necessarily have control.
Okay.
So for example, how are you getting to school? How are you getting home from school? And if you're carpooling, or for example, with our high schools, which is open campus for lunch, what type of, you know, what does that look like? You know, are you going over to someone's house in order to eat lunch possibly, or going, you know, to a location that is not under the, under the purview of, of the district as far as supervision is concerned? Or is everybody piling into a car in order to go somewhere to grab lunch?
And how would we know that? So, we don't.
We don't. But those are some of the riskier behaviors. We have been communicating with, our, our high school principals have been communicating with, mostly with our high schoolers, to advise them as to what are safe activities, what are unsafe activities, and that, hey, we wanna do this, and if you want to be here, we've got to really work at it together. And because together, we're gonna be able to get through this. And so, we want you as a part of our team on this, and practicing these, these safer behaviors.
Well, I am curious to see how many were exposed as a result of Monday, because, you know, that was our first day back, and now students that were exposed are out until January 24th, I think, or something?
It's usually a two-week period.
Yeah. So that'll be interesting to see if we're being safe, and good, that'll be good feedback as to whether or not it's working, and we're doing what we need to do.
Well, we know that health and safety of our students and staff are paramount. There's, there's no question about that. We're not compromising on that. And we are looking at science, we are looking at data. I know at some point in time, we had been talking about a 5% positivity rate. I don't know the enrollments of all these schools, but the zeros would suggest to me that we're below a 5% positivity rate in terms of those schools. So I don't know where that factors in, but I think Mr. Peshal, Mr. Peshal was particularly articulate when he noted that there are several variables that are considered, and they're up there under the secondary indicators. But to go, I don't know if we fully answered Mrs. Olmsted's question or not, about looking to get our students safely back in school five days a week. Is that the direction we're looking to give to administration?
Well, I think there's nobody that thinks it's best to stay virtual. I think everybody wants their, the students in school five days a week. And it's, the community knows what to do. Wear masks, practice separation, wash your hands. I mean, it's within our power. You just have to do it.
Well, I'm seeing some, I'm hearing some yeses, and I'm hearing some head nods, and I shouldn't say hearing head nodding, I'm seeing head nodding, sorry about that.
Yeah.
So is there consensus that the district administration should, should move in the direction of five-day-a-week in-person, as long as we're meeting the criteria of the science and the data? Is that, is that what I'm sensing?
Well, in my mind, that's always, I'm sorry.
Excuse me, just, yes or no? Could we answer that question?
Dr. Horsak, I apologize, but I really don't understand the direction, so please forgive me. I'm not trying to be.
That's what I'm trying to get at. That's my right.
And, and, because I was hearing you say 5%, you know, as far as positivity rate is concerned, you know, at the school level, I was hearing Ms. Olmsted say that you're, you're wanting to get us back into in-person instruction as quickly as possible, but I'm also hearing follow the science. So that, I'm, please forgive me, I just wanna know what the direction is. I just wanna know what the, the direction is that you would like.
My 5% was just an editorial comment, so we'll take that off the table. The question is, I'll let Mrs. Olmsted state her question. We need some closure on that.
Well, I think that people had questions about, I was asking that administration look at, because I know we're doing it as a district-wide decision, that was said earlier, that we break it down, and, you know, my question was, why aren't we breaking it down by schools? And why aren't we breaking it down by levels? Why are we doing district-wide decisions? Because if you look at elementary, and then you, you know, like three through five, or, you know, middle school, and then high school, they're at different levels. And I think our community absolutely can withstand us moving, you know, certain levels back. Why are we, can we look at that and getting our kids back to school as soon as possible, but looking at the numbers for the past two weeks within our own schools? And I understand that we have to look at the burden rate of the community, I really do get that. But it is really hard to look when we have zero, 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 zero everywhere, and we're not in school. It is so difficult to do that. And I get that we have to look at, because we did have that gentleman come in and talk to us, and he did say that you have to look at the whole school as the burden rate for the community, because these kids are part of the community. I, I really do understand that part of the science of it. But I also would hope that everybody understands the, the part of it that these kids, you know, when you look at the numbers that we're providing, our own COVID, it's really difficult for these kids, for me to, to grasp why they are not in school. I mean, I get it, I do, I really, really do. But can't there be, can't we do something in the middle here? You know, to, to get them in as soon as possible, I guess. That's what I'm asking administration to look into, because I don't know, I don't know the answers to that, why we can't do a middle ground here. That's what I was asking, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Mr. Peshal, did you have a question or a comment?
I'm, I, I have one, I have to formulate it.
I, sorry. I have a clarifying question, and a comment as well, I suppose. So, we want to see three work, three weeks' worth of moderately high or lower case rates. My question is, if we see that at K through 2, but not eight, nine through 12, would the K through 2 students then move back, or are we going to only all move back if everyone has it?
No, that's the secondary indicator. And the secondary indicators, we calculate the burden rate for our schools.
Yes.
Our, our students attending in-person instruction.
Okay.
So for kindergarten through second grade, that's one group across the entire district. For third through fifth grade, that's another group. That's across the entire district.
So is it possible for one group to be moved into five days a week before all four groups?
If we have three, three, three reporting cycles of that grade span being at a certain thing, but what you're gonna, what we heard today is that.
Only one of four.
For last week, the only group was grades three through five.
Yeah.
However, we also know that we've been seeing some slight increases this past week on three through five, so I know that's something that's out there too. I don't know how it's gonna impact us yet.
So, my comment that I wanted to make, because for me, these burden status, and when I, when we say high, when we say the rate's high, that sounds scary, right? I prefer the percentages. When we're talking about moderately high, we're talking about 1%. So we are expecting three weeks' worth of 1% or less in order for students to go back. When we talk about high, the top range of high is 3.5%. I'm just putting out, that out there, because for me, it's saying 3.5%, it feels a lot less worrisome as a parent than saying high. So that was my comment. And thank you for answering my clarifying question.
Certainly. So I'm hearing you say, going back to, I know that you said you weren't sticking to it with the percentage rate, but that's why I'm hearing you, you clarifying maybe looking at school-by-school on a percentage basis?
No. I am just trying to put it out into the discussion, that when we're talking about moderately high, we're talking about 1%. we're talking about 1%. And then when we're talking about high, we're talking about 3.5% max. It could actually be 1.2%. We could have 1.2% of our students have COVID, and that would be considered high, and they wouldn't be able to go to school five days a week because 1.2% of them have COVID. I'm just saying that for me, that math, I prefer looking at the actual percentages than these words. That's all. I'm, I'm not actually making that comment to try and persuade anything. It's just to bring clarity to what this discussion is really about when we talk about moderately high versus high.
It just further complicates it because those are, they're arbitrary.
What further complicates it?
The words.
The words, yes. To me, what matters more is the hard percentage.
Could be the number.
Yes. And what we're aiming for is 1% or less to be five days a week. If it's 1.5% or higher, then we're still in hybrid.
And that's something everybody can understand.
Yes, that is all, that's why I said I had a clarifying question and a comment because I feel like that comment just makes it less complicated.
Agreed.
Thank you for agreeing with me on that.
Mrs. Carlin?
Dr. Herzog, I apologize for interrupting you earlier.
Oh, not a problem.
So, but you were asking if our direction was to get the students back in school safely. And I was just going to add what Jim already said, is that we, we've always wanted our kids back in school five days a week. That is the goal of everyone in this room. We are all on the same team. That's what we want, and we want to do it safely. So, I was just going to comment that, to me, that's not a yes or no question because we've already said, yes, we, the direction to the school district is that we want our kids back in school five days a week as soon as possible. And I think that that's what we are working towards. Thank you.
And I apologize for interrupting you.
No, it's okay. This is a, these are tough times.
Thank you. Well, I think we're in agreement that this, every member of this board and the superintendent would like students in school five days a week safely, as soon as that's possible, as soon as the criteria are met here. As I said earlier, safety and health are of paramount importance. And we need to pay attention to that. We also know that we can best serve our students academically, socially, socially and emotionally when they're in our schools. And so, Dr. Cartwright, have we given you enough direction, direction here, or do you need further clarification?
No.
Let me rephrase that. What do you need from the board at this time?
Yeah.
I understand that we want to be back in, in five-day instruction as quickly as possible, but I'm also hearing continue following the methodology that we're, we're, we're using right now. Am I hearing that correct? I just want to make sure I'm hearing correctly, so I'm verifying, pardon.
Well, that is good. You deserve to also ask us clarifying questions. I think that's fair. It's hard for me to feel like if it's above 1.5%, our kids can't go to school five days a week. That is, so I said my comment didn't have a intent, but I guess it did. I will confess now that it did. That, that's hard for me, that's all.
That if it's above 1.5%?
That if, that if, that if our students have, if more than 1% of our students have COVID, they can't go to school five days a week. That's difficult for me to defend to the public. It's difficult for me to buy in as a teacher, or not as a teacher, sorry. I was a teacher once, as a parent. And I feel like I'm being a teacher to my kids now as a parent. It's difficult that if it's even just 1.2% of our students, that they can't go to school five days a week. That is how I feel. I know that's, we're not voting on that. I understand the matrix has already been made.
I just need direction.
Yeah, so that's, I don't know that I'm giving direction, but I'm letting that out.
So, your direction is to, can we revisit that percentage? That's your direction? Can Dr. Cartwright revisit the percentage that we've decided? Is that it?
Yeah, I guess. I don't know, I mean, are we noticed to talk about that kind of stuff? I don't know.
No, we can't talk about that tonight. No, we're not noticed for that. We're just, I believe that Mrs. Olmstead's question was to ask the administration to consider how we could get students back in school safely, five days a week, using the science and the data. We're not throwing that out. That's not, that's not on the table. Okay.
And what I was understanding from Ms. Sallagi, what you were just describing is, if I may, because this may help, because I think I understand what you're saying.
Yes.
It goes back to what's the tolerance level that we are willing to accept?
Yes.
And right now, the tolerance level as defined is to be back into in-person instruction five days a week would be moderately high. But what I heard you say is, should it be at the high?
Yes.
Rather than the moderately high?
Yes.
Am I hearing that correctly?
You are hearing that correctly for me as an individual.
And so, the request is for us to revisit that, um, taking that into consideration.
Yeah. And when I look at very high, I mean, that's, that could be up to 10%. Very high, I, I understand why we wouldn't be for very high or critically high. I do understand following the science.
That would be great. I would love for administration to relook at where we would do this matrix and maybe move that around to get us to school faster. Yes.
Just still safely, still following science, but.
I think Kelly's direction too was to look in, is there a possibility going back to some of these schools that have nothing?
Yes.
Like, can we look into opening the schools that have zeros? Is that correct?
Yeah, but, and again, though, to what Mr. Kramer was saying, like, you know, I mean, these are, you've got 14 middle sort, you know, elementary schools, and this one can't, this one can't, you know, I know that can get really rough. But yes, when you've got a whole group of these kids that don't have any, but our district is at a different place, these should be able to move and, and, you know, independently. If that makes sense, yeah. I'm not doing very good communicating tonight, you guys. I'm really sorry.
But I think the difficulty with that goes back to the percentages. Because like we said, if those schools have 350 people and one of them gets it, that's 1%. And so, that's, if, if our burden was a little more, if we were a little more flexible in what we're willing to tolerate, I feel like what you're asking would be easier to accomplish.
And where, however the administration comes back, I'm just asking them to relook at this for that reason. When you've got one at a school, or, or even if you take all of our elementary kids and they're at this percentage, but you do have to look at the school, if one school has 10 of them and all of us don't, to look at those numbers and to look at, maybe we do need to relook at, so that we can get these kids back to the school, look at where those numbers or that burden rate, that percentage is on that list.
And there could be an announcement.
If that'd be appropriate.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
It could be an, there could be an announcement by the end of this week, which could be a game changer. And that is if teachers and school staff are included in the 1B tier. Because that would protect our teachers and our staff from, from whatever exposure, wherever they might have been exposed. So, that could, as I said, that could be a game changer in terms of decision-making and looking at the science and the data. Mr. Peschel?
Thank you. Better be good than waiting.
You have enough time.
I have. So, so essentially, we want three weeks of consecutive data that supports
A move.
A move from one of these tiers. So, my question is, is that three weeks of data unique to us to look at? Or is that a standard that's, that's being utilized across the board in regards to districts and into making their matrices, their matrices? That's one question. I'd like to afford myself the ability to ask more.
So, every district kind of does things a bit differently. And again, it all comes back to what their risk tolerance is. So, based on what I'm hearing, uh, it sounds like you're asking us to elevate our risk tolerance from where it was when we created the matrix.
Or look into it. I'm not asking you to do it. I'm just asking you guys to have a conversation about it and, and bring it back, kind of like if it's worth it or not. I'm just asking the question.
I guess the question that I was going to ask, I, I mean, is there, and I don't necessarily know how I feel about asking this, and I'm not suggesting that you do it. I'm just putting it out there as a question. If we're looking at three weeks of data, what's, I mean, is it, would it be a negative aspect to say, look at two weeks of data in regards to how we, how we make this, how we maintain the matrix? I mean, you know, I think the fortunate, unfortunate thing that we're trying to say here is, what, now we're saying, trying to say, what, what percentage are we comfortable with our kids getting potentially sick within our schools with, with COVID-19? So, and so, I'm, I'm trying to come to grasp, grasp with that because frankly, if I, if I were able to express my opinion before, I'm comfortable with how this matrix empowers staff to look at the data the way it is right now. I don't have a problem with the words. If you want to put the percentages next to it, that's fine. It makes it more understandable for more people in the community. I have faith in our administration that they're moving in the direction that is best, best suited to get our kids into school. And, and I think Dr. Herzog hits it on the head. There's several things that are coming down the pipe that are going to be beneficial to the health and safety of our community, in our teachers and in our schools. The vaccine's going to have a much larger impact as it gets more readily into our community as well. That's going to benefit that. And the numbers are already showing that may support, you know, kids getting back into school in the Model Two. So, I feel like we're, we're really, and I, I, I don't want to speak for all of you, but my opinion is that we're trying to rush something that's already moving in a direction that is supportive of what we want. My opinion. Um, and, 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 and again, I, I know this is a, a, not the best opinion for some people in the community, but I support Dr. Cartwright and our administration in the direction that they're handling the matrix. I have faith in them in regards to what they're doing to get our kids back into school. And I'm, this is coming from a guy that wanted us in full virtual back in September and didn't have the opportunity to discuss it. So, I, and I'm comfortable with kids being back in school, in a hybrid and in a face-to-face Model Two version as well with certain restrictions. So, I, I just don't want to rush it, really, what we, what we have to. So, that's my, 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 my five bucks.
Thank you, Mr. Peschel. I'm glad we gave you time to formulate all that. Was worth waiting for. Mrs. Garner?
Okay, so if we look at the numbers right now, so is there an option that we could actually look at our internal numbers first? I know we're saying the main indicators, we go district-wide. But can, instead of using the, the county health department's numbers, can we use our own? Because if we look at our numbers right now, currently, we have 14 kids in the entire district that have it. Like, that's 0.1%. That's nothing, right? So, can we at least start there and say, okay, within our own, within our own schools, the buildings themselves, we're seeing less than 1%. We can make up our own words, whatever, we can go with their words, I don't care. But can we start there and then say, okay, so that's what we know about our community. Now, let's go out to the bigger community. And that's our, then that's our second step. Is that possible? Because there's only 14 kids with COVID right now. Again, Kelly's point is spot-on.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the, with the line, oh, sorry. I thought that was a general discussion.
I want to hear his.
We'll go with you first, Sarah.
So, of, of course, that's possible. I think the problem you run into is the randomness of cases. In that if, if you're making individual school decisions, so what, what could be zero or relatively low cases one week? Could be some or, or high case counts the following week, so.
That, I think that's true whether we look at our schools or our community.
Right, but there's, there's more variance within our schools than when you look at the community burden rate.
Okay. And our schools, we now know from gobs of data all over the country, of all the schools that have been in person this whole time, kids are not getting it at school. So, now we've just taken this risk and we've said, oh, actually, it's not as high as we thought it was. Maybe there is some more tolerance to be had at this point.
If I may, Dr. Herzog, only because I want to protect the board a little bit. My understanding is, the big picture, you want us to take a look at this again. I suppose we'll bring it back to the board as a formal agenda item so that we're duly noticed in order to make a decision going forward with this. I'm much clearer now, related to what the request is. I'm going to make an assumption that this is a future agenda item. I know we're off agenda at this point in time, so I'll just say, I'm thinking that we'll be coming when we get to that on our agenda. And, you know, it, we are, as you all know, I know we, we even have a, I know timeliness is of essence at this. I know we are looking to have a special board meeting next week. So, maybe I will consult with the board president, vice president to see as far as timely, you know, timing on this is concerned. Uh, but I just want to make sure that I help protect the board and, and, and conversation and not go too far down a rabbit hole.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, I believe that meeting next week is with the city council. Our annual joint meeting between the school board and the city council. So, unless we would, well, that possibly could be an agenda item with them. But I think, I think at this point, I'm sensing we've probably spent enough time on this and we've given enough direction. And since we're not noticed to make any changes in the matrix, this is probably a good place to stop.
So, my, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
At this point in time, Dr. Herzog, that is, that would complete the district administrator's supplemental reports.
Very good. Thank you. So, then we move on to, excuse me, board committee reports. I believe we have reports tonight from policy and governance, education, and legislative, correct? Who would like to go first?
I can go first.
Okay, Mrs. Sallagi, thank you so much.
Education committee met Monday of this, no, Thursday of last week. Policy didn't meet Monday of this week. I'm getting my meetings mixed up, sorry. And we talked about Act 31, which is a state law that requires elementary and social studies teachers to teach about Native Americans in their social studies curriculum. So, Julie Conrad, Vicky Poyer, and Dr. Kim Brown reviewed the new social studies standards and resources for grades K through five and also at the secondary grade levels. We actually just adopted those social studies standards in, well, we had an update, I guess I should say, about them in December of 2019. So, we've been talking about social studies curriculum a lot. There's a lot of exciting things going on. Vicky Poyer is the CTE and social studies curriculum coordinator, and she talked about the foundational work that at the levels kindergarten through second grade, students will focus on self and identity, so exploring factors that influence their individual development like their family, culture, place, economic opportunities, and the governing bodies in their communities. From grades three through five, students learn more about Wisconsin and the United States through the lens of all the stand, strands of social studies. Students then advance to learn about Wisconsin and US through geography map skills, spatial analysis, and chronological study. Students in grade eight learn about US history, including colonial America through the Industrial Revolution. And that is, of course, a good time to fill this Act 31 law where we talk about the early influence on our country with various Native American groups. Grade 10 students learn about US history from the progressive movement to the present. And students in grade 11 learn about government and politics, including a review of federalism. So, all of those different subject levels allow for Act 31 to be put into practice. When we did have our update in December of 2019 about the social studies rollout, it was a three-year rollout plan, and that has been influenced or impacted by the pandemic that started just a few months after that. So, as stated in the 2019 update, the biggest barrier remains not being able to find a comprehensive resource, meaning like a textbook that will cover all of our standards and strands. Curriculum selection criteria includes equity, diversity, literacy, making sure we have proper tools, and engagement. So, the district has gone above and beyond to make partnerships to try and find the resources we need to support our curriculum. They have a partnership with the Cooperative Children's Book Center through UW-Madison that's helping find text resources for elementary students. We have a partnership with the Oshkosh Public Museum and the Wisconsin State Historical Society. In fact, the district has one OASD teacher who's now also working part-time at the Oshkosh Public Museum, and some of her work includes revising lesson plans, which will be property of the museum. But the Oshkosh area school district will be able to use the plans at no cost through the work that she's doing. Moving forward, the next steps will, or the needs that they presented to us at the end that they know they will need from the board. that they know they will need from the board, is dedicated leadership, making sure projects and the curriculum development gets done. A K through 12 social studies curriculum coordinator, that would be what they do, and a dedicated K through five instructional support teacher for social studies. There are also, there's lots of opportunity to link social studies to the equity work that we have in our strategic plan. And then it was noted that teachers are working on this. They are exhausted due to the other things that have happened between now and our December 2019 meeting, so the rollout of this has been slowed a little bit, but we are going to come up with strategies to keep it moving forward, and it has continued to move forward. Our next meeting will be February 4th, and we will be talking about our reading curriculum. And that is all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Solaji. So we have legislative and policy and governance then.
Policy and governance committee met on Monday morning. We discussed a few policies. They're all the same policies, just for the different groups. And it is policy 1630-02, the Oshkosh Area School District-sponsored COVID-related leave. It's a new policy. Dr. Pinkston and the committee reviewed the policy and each of the following policies on the agenda. They are duplicates for each employee group. Dr. Pinkston explained that since the Family First Coronavirus Relief Act enacted by the federal government to ease the burden of employees whose lives were directly impacted by COVID-19 global health crisis ended on December 31, 2020. There was a need for the district to provide leave for employees needing to quarantine due to an exposure of COVID or contracting COVID. The proposed leave would provide for up to two weeks, 80 hours of paid leave at 100% of the employee's salary. The leave is only applicable if previous COVID-related leave has not been taken. If the employee is well enough to work remotely, the district has offered that opportunity. If job responsibilities and available technology allow for it, this would result in a reduced need for an employee to access the district-provided leave. However, employees with certain job responsibilities cannot effectively complete their job responsibilities remotely. The committee agreed to extend the policy through June 30 of 2021. We get a tax break on it until March 31 of 2021, but then the district would have to sponsor up until the end of the contract, until June 30, we decided. However, the policies are subject to revision by the district at any time. Leave provided pursuant to this policy may be superseded or replaced by a specific COVID-19 leave mandated pursuant to state and/or federal law. The district reserves the right to discontinue this benefit if other state or federal laws becomes available. The committee recommended the June 30 of 2021 end date for this policy. So therefore, it is on our agenda for tonight for consent resolution. Our next meeting is going to be February 8th, and future meeting agenda items will be whistleblower's policy and the policy regarding anonymous letters.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Holstead. And finally, the legislative committee.
Okay, the legislative committee met on Thursday, December 17th. We, as usual, we went through a little bit of a legislative update. And back in December 17th, the big thing was that Governor Ubers held a virtual listening session on the budget. And the pandemic response bill that the assembly came up, didn't look like it's going to be going anywhere in the Senate. And we got breaking news, the Senate has come out with their pandemic response bill that the governor has actually agreed to sign if they can get the assembly to accept the Senate's bill. So we'll be waiting on that. And seven people were circulating papers for position of state superintendent, and I know now that all seven had qualified, so there will be a primary for a state superintendent in February. The second item was identifying legislative priorities for 2021 session. Dr. Cartwright provided a document summarizing the results of the workshops from the previous two board meetings. She recommended that the committee choose three to five items where going forward for the school year, the committee's time and energy will be focused. And we did that. The top five items that we chose were mental health, accountability, funding, funding for FTE headcount windows, and funding to support the inclusion of the 2020 and 2021, which is ever is higher in student count, and equity. And that is also on our agenda to prove that platform. So we will be doing that in just a couple of minutes. And our next meeting is January 28th.
Thank you very much. Mr. Evans? Are there any other committee reports? Okay. Then we move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. I'm sorry that it's taken us longer than I expected to get to that point in the agenda, so I appreciate the waiting of our two folks who have signed in. We have two people who have signed up tonight just to review the rules. We ask that you clearly state your name and address and the topic you wish to address. If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group you represent. State clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is three minutes. And remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the superintendent's office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. So with that, we will begin with Alicia Alsberg.
Don't worry, it's not a COVID conversation. My name is Alicia Alsberg, and I'm at 1624 Maricopa Drive. I previously addressed the school board during the April 8, 2020 meeting. Actually, Dr. Cartwright read my comment. But I would like to discuss again regarding open enrollment for children of teachers and staff of our district. I feel making teachers' life a little easier by allowing teachers to have priority over where their child attends school should be a benefit extended to teachers and staff. Open enrollment is an option, but a student could be denied the next year, causing the student potentially to be bounced between schools. I would like to see a policy written that when a teacher and staff submits for open enrollment, the request is approved for that family and the incoming siblings, also approved for the duration of the grades at that school. I do have a few friends that are teachers who I spoke with, and they go through this every year, and one was actually denied once. So I can't help but wonder if there's other teachers and staff that could be going through the same struggle. This topic was discussed during one of the policy meetings, June 8 in 2020. And the response in the notes, excuse me, was the committee decided to keep the process currently being used for consistency and equity. So in other words, keeping the policy for fair enrollment. But we are talking about our school district staff. I think the current policy is treating our staff and teachers and the students of those staff and teachers unfairly. The current policy offers no consistency to the student when the open enrollment could be denied. Teachers and staff are our district's biggest asset, and I would like it to be considered possibly to rewrite it, that when the teacher and staff submits for the open enrollment, that it is approved for that family, the incoming siblings, and then approved for the duration for the grades at that school. And this is, you know, I'm not a teacher, but I just, I mean, I like our teachers to stay happy. And, I mean, they're doing a phenomenal job right now. This is totally outside of our pandemic, but, so anyways, thank you for your time.
And thank you, Ms. Conrad.
I remember from last time, the three minutes goes really fast.
I know. So next we have Julia Salomon. Please state your name and your address.
Sure. My name is Julia Salomon. I'm at 1320 Snowdon Drive in Oshkosh. I'm the parent of a sophomore at West High School. I also work for the Winnebago County Public Health Department, but I'm here to talk with you as a parent. I have made use of school board listening sessions and have attended school board meetings, and I have always felt that my comments have been heard by you, so thank you for that. I suspect that everyone, parents, teachers, administrators, and school board members want the kids to be back school face-to-face, including myself. I want my daughter to be in school all week. My daughter does too. However, in the same breath, she also tells me that she is concerned and scared of getting COVID. She's concerned for herself, and she's concerned of bringing it back home. Home to my husband, who has an underlying condition, and home to her mom, who also has underlying conditions. We do not know the long-term effects of COVID, and that's a concern as well. Now, I am not advocating "we live in fear," a term I've heard thrown out to describe those who choose to follow the public health guidelines to a T. But I am advocating, but I am an advocate for schools who are responsible for not only the education of our students, but also their safety, to review and adopt any precautionary measure possible. And I know that you have. The school district has adopted safety measures to help keep our students and their families and their staff safe. These have been unpopular choices, no doubt, and the administration has heard harsh criticism about these. I do not envy any one of you in this room at all, and I work for public health, so. I know I have faith, I know and have faith that schools will get back to some semblance of normacy. It will be a new normal, and as a parent, I am willing to lend my voice, and as a parent, as a public health professional, should there be an opportunity to do so. I've heard comments about the lack of communication from this administration, and frankly, I'm scratching my head and trying to understand those comments. If anything, I have noticed an increase in communication, and while some of the communication is rather lengthy, it would be easy to just gloss, and it would be easy to just gloss over these, I'm so glad that I don't. There is a lot of information in those communications. There is no doubt that COVID has taken over our lives. I suspect the school district is responsible for so much more than COVID, like educating our kids. If there is one criticism I have that this district does not do such a good job, is in celebrating their own good deeds. Let me give you some examples. Ah, okay. Some things that come to mind. How the school shooting back in October 19 was handled. Everybody remember that, pre-COVID? How the school provided support to students in the aftermath? The adoption of universal school nutrition meals? The fact that the school district provided thousands of meals to students and their families back in spring of 2019 throughout the summer of 2019 and continued to do so? The fact that their school nurses have done more than stepped up to the plate in terms of COVID-19 response, and have facilitated delivery of meals to families impacted by COVID? How much the teachers have adapted to continue to teach in a very...
Could you wrap that up in about 15 to 30 seconds, please? Thank you.
Yeah. So kudos to the teachers who keep the students engaged. I have some examples, but I'll gloss over them. And that these actions by state, by staff are appreciated, and that I know that things don't happen in a vacuum. Some of these actions require a lot of heavy lifting. I know these decisions do too, and I suspect many in the community and I myself don't even know. In closing, I am but one mom with one kid in this district, and this mom is appreciative of the decisions the school administration has made that are based on sound evidence and, in the case of the pandemic, sound science. Yes, I want my kid back in school, and at the same time, I thank you for keeping her and my family safe.
Thank you very much. Okay, there were no individuals who signed up for the agenda-related public forum, so we will move on at this time to workshops. And again, I apologize for the lateness of the hour, but I believe we've had some rather robust conversations this evening, which have been valuable.
Talk amongst yourselves.
For Ms. Conrad's dedication to safety and good health over there.
So, good evening. I am Julie Conrad, Director of Curriculum Assessment, and I have with me this evening Zach Starkey, our Oshkosh Area School District CLC director, and Dr. Janelle Holstead from UW-Green Bay. And I will talk more about her role in just a second. And we're here to talk about our 21st Century Community Learning Center initiative in the Oshkosh Area School District. So we are going to go over the purpose and our current status of CLC after-school programming, a description of what's been going on over the past year, because it seems like COVID is dominating our programming and our conversations, our evaluation in partnership with Dr. Holstead, and a question-and-answer opportunity. So first off, as a reminder, 21st Century Community Learning Centers are for students and for parents. And so when we take a look at this, our CLCs provide just students services that include extending the school day, and in partnership with our schools. And it provides literacy and math support, the key is academic enrichment, community service opportunities, and other things that kids find really super-engaging, from STEM to music, arts, and cultural activities. When we're in person, CLCs are expected to support students, and they're expected to support families. That's a key piece with this, and parents. And then when virtual, centers are also looking to support the Oshkosh Area School District parents and families the best we can in one-on-one tutoring and with services to the youth in our CLC schools that most need it. So I am quite, I'm often asked, and I think Zach gets this question too, is what's the difference between a CLC and our after-school childcare programming? Well, first off, it's our funding sources is a key piece of that. The 21st Century Community Learning Center and Fund 80 fuel and fund our after-school programs that we call Lighted Schoolhouse and MELT. Lighted Schoolhouse is at our elementary, and MELT is middle enrichment learning time, middle extended learning time. There you go. And we are under grant requirements, and we have goals that are established through the 21st Century Learning Center and the Fund 80 for those after-school programs. So we have rigorous goals and expectations through that, because we really truly are extending the learning day through these programs. Our YMC and Boys and Girls Club of Oshkosh is fee-based, before and after-school programs. They're available to Oshkosh families, serving students from our eight elementary sites. These are not district programs. They are school-aged childcare sites, and they fall under childcare licensing pieces, and it is not linked to the school day. We have excellent, don't get me wrong, we have excellent partnerships with those organizations, but it is not an explicit extension of the school day. So currently, this is where we are when we look at competitive grant cycles. CLC grants are competitive, and so each time that we have been awarded a CLC grant, it has been a great celebration, is what that comes, funding and support. And so up there, you can see the different cycling that we have through there. In these competitive grants, we know that those grants, as you can tell in the cycle, we have schools that age out after a while with the grants. Webster Stanley is one grant school that has been within the grant programs for many, many years and has aged out. So we're required, and our school district has decided to support and sustain that after-school programming through Fund 80. So here is where we currently are within our cycle funding for after-school, and so you can see where we are. So E. Cook, Webster, and Washington L. has, in a way, aged or cycled out of funding, and you can see where other schools are within there. Schools that are in Fund 80, we'll talk about that. We treat them just as if they're under federal grants, keeping together the goals, the data, and consistency within those programmings across the schools. So I am going to turn it over to Zach to talk a little bit about what programming looked prior to the pandemic.
So prior to the pandemic, both our MELT programs and Lighted Schoolhouse programs started off our days pretty similarly. Our students would report to either the cafeteria, gymnasium, to check in for their attendance, get their snack. Once all that started going through, we'd go through some Lighted Schoolhouse or MELT announcements as to what was going to take place that day. And then we would offer recess or homework help to get students rolling. After recess, students would come in, they'd go to their separate classrooms led by their lead staff, where they would get the additional homework help, tutoring, any literacy help with the help of our ISTs that were supporting us. And that would usually run from 30 minutes to 45 minutes. After that... After that, we would enter into one of our activities, usually a lesson based around three subjects that are required through the 21st Century Grant with social-emotional learning, STEM, and literacy. And that would take us about an hour, forty-five minutes to an hour, all the way up to five o'clock. At five o'clock is usually the start of our closing where parents will come in and do, and pick up. If students are staying late, then we do offer the added, you know, do you need help with homework? We have certain activities set out for them to utilize. Allow them to express voice and choice to see, you know, what do they want, do they want to do a small group activity in the gym? Do they want to play, you know, cards in the lobby, you know, something like that? So that's what, in general, that's what Lighted Schoolhouse and MELT did. The difference between Lighted Schoolhouse and MELT is that when it comes to activities, students automatically right away have the choice of what they want to participate in that day. It'd usually be what we call clubs, but it's essentially four different activities in the realm of STEM, SCL, literacy, or, you know, miscellaneous topic that students could sign up for and participate in with that lead teacher.
So as you can see on this slide, this is representation of the percent of the school population served in each of our schools. And then as you can see, you may be going, oh, wait a minute, the percent of the population in the middle schools looks a little bit smaller. Remember that our middle schools are bigger, so the same, like we have similar numbers, but the percentage is a little bit lower. And as we are looking at our percent population served, that's one indicator and one piece of data that we take a look at. But we also look at and grants for 21st Century Learning Centers are dependent on the percent of students that are classified as economically disadvantaged. And you can see that threshold is forty percent. And so when you start looking at the percent of participants that are economically disadvantaged, we are hitting those goals as far as the target student population. And then you can also start to see in here demographics, we absolutely recruit students with disabilities, special needs. And remember, LEP is Limited English Proficiencies, so our ELs would be that population in there and how they are participating. And then you can also see the demographics here as far as the breakdown by race and ethnicity where students are in reach of our schools. And so then in spring 2020, came Safe Right Home orders and Berthold learning. And so how did our CLC programming respond?
So our response was, we got involved with our teachers when it came to utilizing Google Classrooms, emailing them, emailing, you know, our families, our secretaries to, you know, put out there that, you know, we're going to be available every day of the week from, you know, the time school starts till the time school ended and even a little longer to help out with tutoring, any kind of virtual support we could. And we were doing that the entire time and then on top of that, and we'll get into it, but we were also doing professional development as well as some of the virtual seminars that were being offered. With that, we were able to support roughly sixty-five students during that time from all of our sites.
So our CLC staff also strove during that time to make sure that they had connections with the kids and kept those connections and personal notes, personal letters, those types of things meant a lot for our kids. And then as Zach said, program and staff development was a key thing that we engaged, we took advantage, right, of being virtual at that time as far as staff development as well. So right now, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Holstead, who's going to talk about our evaluation outcomes and results and her role in partnership with us and the school district.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me.
Thank you for having me.
I wear two hats in regard to the CLC program here in Oshkosh. I am, I work as the state evaluator for DPI, so I get to work with one hundred and forty-two centers across the state during this very crazy time in education, an exciting time. And in addition to that statewide role, I'm also the local evaluator for Oshkosh. So last year, pre-pandemic, Kathy, the previous site coordinator, had me come to all of the, I'm sorry, the program director, had me attend all of the CLC sites. So luckily, we were able to get the site visits in before the schools physically shut down. And in those site visits, we essentially look at ten indicators of program quality based on quality research. And so we were able to look at and document what the program was doing in person. Those site visits also happened this year in, in the fall semester in terms of the virtual and in-person tutoring services that you'll hear more about in a minute. But that's kind of what that site visit information is. The evaluation for last year and this year is disrupted because of what is available and what's not available. But these are the goals and outcome measures that Oshkosh is required to report to the state and to the federal government. And so we're looking at assessments, we typically look at assessment scores. We look at parent and student surveys to get perspective on the, on the program. We look at teacher surveys under normal circumstances. And if you want to go to the next slide, a lot of those things last year weren't possible. We might have had pre-assessment scores because of Fall 2019 being in person, but those things didn't necessarily happen. And similarly, because of the stress of the pandemic, we didn't feel it appropriate to survey parents or, or students or, or teachers especially during the spring semester. Those requirements for the evaluation last year were waived. So Oshkosh and the rest of the school, schools in Wisconsin didn't have to report on a number of things state and federally that were typically required. For this year, there's actually a meeting tomorrow morning to decide what is going to be required and not required, but anticipating that there's going to be a lot of amendments or waivers granted that either sites get blanketed across the state or waived completely on a case-by-case basis. So looking ahead, you know, there were four hundred and fifty-six students served this fall. And you can see the breakdown of what, you know, what is happening so far.
So from September first through September twenty-third, we were operating under our normal hybrid learning. So our, what we were doing pre-pandemic was what we're doing the same during from the first to the twenty-third. As soon as we hit that disruption with virtual learning, we got really creative in how we attacked and tried to keep that interest from our families and students. So we set up Google Classrooms. We utilized some free partnerships with some businesses like Duolingo to offer, you know, free language lessons. We got involved with our Google Classrooms with all the teachers. Like I said, we set up our own. We got some of our non-Lighted Schoolhouse and MELT kids involved in our virtual tutoring, our in-person tutoring programs, homework support during that entire time from, you know, from the day, from the time our coordinators would come into the buildings till they leave. So on average, we're probably helping ten, fifteen kids per site each day. And it just continued to rise as the months went on. With our families, before we went virtual, we wanted to do something big because a lot of families were facing some financial hardships, you know, food shortages. Like we wanted to do something special for our families to show that the CLC programs were going to be there for them. So on top of the virtual family nights and the trivia that we're doing through Google Meets and Zoom, we came up with the idea of utilizing some of our small businesses within the community like Rodney's Cafe, Mr. and Mrs. Agaral, DeeDee's Barbecue, and got them involved with our Family Food Truck Night on October twenty-ninth. DeeDee's was at Webster Stanley, Rodney's was at Tipler, and it was a huge success. I was hoping for, you know, about thirty percent of our families. We got over forty percent. They were very grateful. And we're looking forward to, you know, coming up with something else when it comes to the spring semester. And this is just a list of, you know, some of our partnerships that we have been utilizing. Some of the ones I want to highlight are UW-O Counseling with Dr. Swanson. She was able to get some of her grad students to continue working with us. Were able to set up some small group or individual counseling sessions with some of our kids who are struggling socially and just needed that, that little therapeutic session either with their friends or just on their own. And that was something that the small group or individual sessions were decided between with the parents, if they wanted their kids with, just on their own or with a small fan, a small group. Another one, I don't know if it's listed on there, but we were able to also do Sneezing Cow Incorporated. They're a children's book publishing company that we recently did. And we had some of the authors do some family nights with our children and parents doing a read-alot and doing a fun little Q and A as well. So this is, these are some testimonials that some of our parents, teachers, students have sent to us. And I just want to highlight, I'll highlight one of them, and one of them's from a, a mine cook teacher. That said, "Thank you so much for everything you are doing. You have been able to help reach families that would not have gotten anything done if you and the LSH staff hadn't stepped up. Thank you." And we, we've been getting a lot of that, but this just highlights, highlights it.
That's great.
So some of these stand conclusions with this is that you can see that through the evaluations, through the things we have presented, that there's a strong need for this program. And this program is being requested at other schools as well, and we'll talk about that. Frequent attendance of program participants when we're in person is a key indicator. Those served during virtual learning are those most in need of services. That, that's been a real strength, that we've really been able in partnership to identify those. And the programs are serving the populations that the grant, the 21st Century Community Learning Centers were designed to, to meet the needs of. And the programming is meeting unprecedented needs and helping youth in those things. So from a sustainability lens, this reviewing here, our CLC funding is limited and it is increasingly competitive. So like when we win, when we get the grant award, it is a big deal. And as Janelle can attest to, like, it's extremely competitive.
It's extremely competitive. Every year it gets worse.
Yes.
Ms. Conrad, how long, how, I'm so sorry, how long are those, the grants? Are they just one year? Some are three, right? No? Are they just one years?
Oh, I mean, I can be able to do it. It's a, it's a three, so you're, we're awarded in three years, so cycle one, cycle two, and it's for three years every time.
Yep, that's what I remember. Okay, just wanted to ask. Thank you so much.
So currently, six out of our nine CLC sites are grant-funded. Three of our sites are fully funded out of Fund 80 and thank you, that was a key area and project we did with Facilities and Finance, figuring out how do we keep this going because it's important to our school district. Our plans currently are to submit applications for Reed and Oklaun in January 2022 because that is when the next funding cycle will be up for competition. And so Reed and Oklaun are very specific and it is based on need analysis. So where Reed and Oklaun are with their, and I hate using this term, but their at-risk population are students that we've identified in need and our families, those really are the two schools that we would be applying for and they really want this programming as well. As sites age out, we really want to be committed and have a commitment to invest in these programs to ensure that we're still doing that for our schools. And our students and families have really come to rely on the CLC programming. And once again, they're requesting them at other schools. So, so that is our report. And Janelle, Zach, and I are available to answer any questions you have.
I don't have a question. I just have a compliment. And you guys, I don't know who is coming up with these ideas, but you guys are amazing. And you, they say the pandemic has brought out the best and the worst in people and it's the best for what you guys are doing. And I think that food truck idea with the food trucks in different schools, I don't know who came up with that, but that was brilliant. So congratulations to you and thank you for everything that you do.
I just have to compliment, is that Mr. Starkey? He, like, one of his biggest strengths is creative, innovative ways to get students engaged and to really engage families and looking at those partnerships. So food, food truck and then the staff and the way, I just, I can't say nothing. But it's really the, it's really the staff and Zach's leadership that's been key in all of this.
You, you and I run the same wavelength in terms of two words, innovation, innovate, innovation and creativity. That's what I was thinking about as Mrs. Carlin was speaking. And I think sometimes we look at the negatives and we look at what we don't have in times, times of stress or challenge. But I think you folks have demonstrated that you've looked at creative ways to reach out to and engage our families. And as well as innovation, you've shown innovation in this, putting students first, so you are to be commended. Thank you.
And I would also just add from the state perspective, we've had a number of CLCs this year that have asked to do nothing. And that's not Oshkosh and it's very exciting that it's not. Oshkosh is one of the stars in the state in terms of its innovation and how it's still using partnerships during this time when partners aren't allowed in the building at all.
We appreciate your leadership as well. That's very important to have that support at the regional as well as state level, so thank you. Other comments or questions? Again, thank you for coming and thank you for putting our students first and everything you're doing to help those students and families. It's very important. Well done. Thank you.
So if you can give us just a second so we can switch.
Transition, yes. All right, fair enough.
My heart is happy, yeah, saying.
And our next workshop then is our annual Summer School Program 2020 Review and 2021 Program Plan Preview. There are certain topics that appear on our annual agenda. And if it's January, it's got to be a summer school report, so, so thank you for being here.
In the depths of winter, you're talking about summer school, right? So, good evening again. Once again, I'm Julie Conrad, Director of Curriculum Assessment, and I have with me Doris Bailey, who is our 4K through eight summer school principal, Dan Dunn, who is our secondary nine through twelve summer school principal. And being socially listed, we have Kelly Skiffstand, our extended school year coordinator for summer slots. So we're very happy to have this team here. And before I even get started, I can, I actually told Dan, Doris, and Kelly that if we have to go through, we're going to, we're going to review and we're going to preview what's going on here. And if I had to go through making changes, revising, and being innovative and creative on how to do things, I wouldn't want any other team than these three. So they have been fabulous. So. Okay, here we go. So here are the highlights. We did have summer school 2020. It looked different, but we did have, we did have summer school. So we had one thousand six hundred and thirty-three, thirty-three total course enrollments. That you'll see when we get to the chart, that is down from over four thousand, so it was, yeah, it was quite a, quite a reduction. We had one hundred, one thousand six hundred and ten students attend at least one day of summer school. And you know, we have a plethora of offerings, so there was different ways they could do that. We did our first ever virtual sessions for K eight. And up to this point in time, with, there were waivers that were put into place. Virtual summer school was not an option for our little ones, our youngest learners up until this summer. So we had stepping up to, you insert the grade level, and then we had classes for each grade. E-Academy, we have typically had E-Academy for grades nine through twelve. We were filled up with that and so the virtual courses were offered. Yes, we can do virtual athletic camps. We figured that out for grades five through twelve. We did have in-person band camps with multi-layered safety precautions in place. We got that going in August. It was, you know, delayed, but we, we got it going. We had, this was a huge one. One hundred percent of our teachers for summer school were Oshkosh Area School District teachers. And that was a goal we've been striving towards for the past few years. And we actually achieved that this year. So that was great. And our extended school year was in-person for ten days. We did it. And, and that was in late July and early August. So let's talk about historical enrollment and I'll turn it over to Doris.
There we go. All right. So as you can see, we had to modify.
There we go. All right. So as you can see, we had to modify our chart just a bit because our classes were totally different last year. So we did have some, some little ones. We had ready for kindergarten and getting ready for first grade virtually, totally virtually. So we found devices for those kiddos and, and got them learning during the summer or continued learning during the summer. For the math and the literacy, we had the stepping up classes included, the math and the literacy together. So that just includes the total number of students we served in K through five. And they were all virtual, of course. And that was where the only courses we offered were stepping up to, which were mostly math and literacy focused. And then the other courses were from the rec department. They did hold some courses as well at a minimal, you know, very reduced level from normal. Okay. So this, again, is just our continuation compared to, it's hard to compare at this point because, you know, everything looks so different. But we did want to supply some numbers. We did have our camps. We had a band camp, very successful. We had orchestra lessons and camp. We had virtual lessons and then the camp. We did not offer the camp, I'm sorry. We had, those were just lessons. And then we did not offer the choir camp because of the, you know, the COVID issue and not being prepared quite yet to sing with our, you know, our safety precautions. And then all of the other courses there are listed as well. And you can see the numbers are down, but we still feel that with, you know, having pushed it back multiple times and being able to, you know, provide services at all was a success. So.
These are better than I thought they would be.
Since it touched it several times.
That's fine. Thanks. Our two areas of the high school, summer school, we have our credit recovery area. Our numbers were down a little bit. I want to just say our teachers did really a phenomenal job. Normally with these kids, these are kids that have failed a required course for graduation. They need to come in in summer school and get, get those requirements taken care of. Normally they're coming to school every day during the summertime to get those requirements taken care of. Here it was completely virtual. So it really wasn't, you know, the teachers normally make a really good connection with these kids when they're seeing them every day in school and helping them get through, get through those courses. So it was a challenge to do it virtually. But our teachers really, they worked very hard and it was really, they were positive with these kids all through, through the time. And so we, I felt like we did pretty well with regards to the credit recovery. With regards to the enrichment courses, there were a few of our in-person enrichment courses that were, we, we had to cancel. Other of our enrichment courses, we moved to online. And so, you know, there was a disparity in the numbers a little bit there. But overall, I felt we were pretty successful with our enrichment courses as well.
So if you look at the, if you look at the totals, 2019, we had 4,411 courses taken for K through 12. And so in 2020, when you take a look at it, it was 1,633. So that's where the difference is.
And then the only thing I want to mention here, we really actually had more credits earned this past summer than we had in, in previous years. And one of the reasons for, a couple of reasons for that was our health numbers were significantly up. When we moved to virtual, they were able to handle a few more kids. And almost all kids, once they were enrolled and got the course started, they stayed in the course. Whereas during summer school, it's, it's a challenge because when it's in person, they're going, coming four and a half hours a day for three weeks straight. Well, we do get some dropouts during that time. And, and we're pretty strict on what the, you can only miss one class and then you're dropped out of the class. So the health numbers certainly helped there as well as driver's ed, the classroom portion with virtual. So Mr. Morrison was able to take on additional kids there and actually got, I believe, close to 90 kids through the driver ed, classroom portion of driver's ed. So that's what helped bump our numbers up there a little bit.
So the final, financial impact in summer school always brings a lot of questions because we need to remember that summer school straddles two fiscal years, right? And then so every year it straddles two fiscal years. But now, think about this first 2020, we had to push off a good portion of our offerings to after the start of the next fiscal year. And so when we take a look at that, our numbers now are even more skewed towards what we're going to be looking at in the 2020, 21 budget because we did push staffing and like courses to later in the summer because we had to, right? So that's going to be some of the pieces here. And if you recall from this time last year, when we were doing the preview and the review, there was also a negative projected number in the budget impact. And you'll notice that we are definitely in the positive from where we had previously budgeted. That's, that's a little high and it will probably not, that's a little high, but that's because of where staffing and the money got pushed to. But if you look at our, what we had for 2020 and 21, for that 495,000 is what, what is budgeted. That's not necessarily what we're predicting that we're going to use or we're going to expend. That's what we typically budget to say this is what we're going to cover. Because we always want to go make sure that we can cover all the staffing if we get the maximum number of students. So then with revenues, it's going to look like right now that our projected is a negative, is a, is a budget deficit. And we're projecting, just like we did before. That's not going to be the case. That's just where our bookkeeping stands right now. So I know there's always a little confusion on that. I, I don't know if you have any other, if you have some questions on that or if that kind of makes sense. Summer school and data and bookkeeping is always tricky, right? So.
Okay. So our plans, our plans for 2021, we're going back previous to last year, obviously. And we're going to hold though hopefully both virtual and in-person courses, mostly in person. But we're going to try to make virtual courses available for all grade levels, even the, the younger students if the new state ruling on funding goes through. So in other words, if they approve that, we can still do that and get funded for it. We will offer at least one per level. And then that will, you know, it'll be determined on enrollment if we get enough enrollment to opt, to run those. Registration confirmation sent out electronically as we've done in the past. If paper is requested, we will do that. This year again, there will be no overlap with EAA. That helps our numbers as well. These are our summer school dates for, that we're proposing for 4K through eight. So 16 days, no Fridays, July 4th is on a Sunday. So that does not affect our, our enrollment nor does it, our dates, nor does it affect absences due to July 4th because we always have those when it's during the week as well. So that's for K through, 4K through eight. And for nine through 12, worth doing as usual as well. Monday through Friday, immediately following the last day of school, we start high school session one for three weeks and then high school session two for the following three weeks. Again, no overlap with EAA, which will help tremendously. And this is still me, I guess. So our locations, we're going to stick with the same locations as we had planned for last year and as we had the year before. So Jefferson, Oklaun and Traeger for elementary and middle school at North and high school at North. Middle school will follow the elementary schedule though, not the high school schedule as usual. Now I do want to mention Traeger will have some work being done there on its air conditioning unit. So that's why I wrote no AC there. But it is still the best location for our students and our staff to hold summer school. Because otherwise we have to split them between two buildings. And this is our preferable location. So athletic and music camps may be held at other location sites, but we are also planning for those again.
Okay. With regards to our race and dash program, those are the students that failed a required course by kind of within that 5% range. So they really, they just missed a few requirements. So we do give them a 10-day, a 10-day window at the beginning of summer school to the, our race dash teachers work with the classroom teachers to figure out what those requirements are that could get them to a passing grade. And it, and it gives those students, rather than having to retake the entire course, it gives them the opportunity to make up those, those requirements and, and pass the class. And so we will continue with that again this year. We're going to continue with the learning lab model in person, hopefully. And, and we'll do that at North. And we will have teachers in each of the content areas available at all times in both the race and bash and in the learning lab.
And I know this question is going to come, so I will go ahead. Oh, you're next, but I'm going to answer this part of it. Yes, we are anticipating a higher than normal demand for credit recovery. We had a higher than normal demand, or we should have had a higher normal, than normal demand for credit recovery at that point. So we are planning for that. And, and as you're taking a look at this, race and dash, which is a standards-based credit recovery piece, has been in place at both of our high schools for probably seven or eight years. It's, it's, it's been a while. We are really using that and expanding that and making sure that we are looking at always possible to make sure that students are getting what they need and making sure that they are meeting their requirements because it is about learning, right? And so we're wanting to make sure that they're ready also for the next level. And we prefer to do a race dash and have students work through their course requirements rather than going into our learning lab model where they actually are, are using a program called Edgenuity to do that credit recovery. So that is preferred. And we are, both the high schools, we are planning for that. We have supports in place and we'll be ready for that. So.
As of right now, our elective courses, options will typically be the same. I believe last year we probably did not run any of these in person. So the virtual drivers ed and, and then we had our E Academy courses, which covered a few of these. But hopefully this year we'll be able to get these back in, in person. And our E Academy courses, I think there's 11 on the list. We ran seven of these last year based on enrollments and really had excellent numbers in our E Academy program. I think we were averaging somewhere between 18 and 20 kids per, per class. And we ran actually, I think, as, as many as nine, I think nine sections, I think. So it was really as successful this past summer.
So as I said earlier, we had fully planned for last summer and we're just going to kind of go back to that plan for this coming summer with the same types of courses with new, at least one virtual course per grade level. So those course guides and things will come out in the future. That'll be mentioned a little later. But we're going back to our normal offerings for summer school, the fun classes, the enrichment classes, along with the literacy and the math. So we can get a little, you know, if they need literacy and math, they enroll in one or both of those. And if they want to take a fun, you know, class, survivor, art, music in addition, they have two courses that they can enroll in at most for the K through eight students. And some of this will be based on their teachers' guidelines too, you know, whether they think they need literacy or math and hearing and communication. So hopefully we'll get the students who need to get a little bit more literacy and math this summer based because of, you know, the last year has been tough. We'll get more, you know, hopefully more enrollments in those. And then our athletic camps will run just as they have in the past years. We're going, we're planning on offering those the same way we did in the past at both high schools and the middle school level at both high schools as well. And those are the proposed dates that we got from the instructors at this point. And lessons, we had lessons last year virtually. And they were 20-minute lessons once per week. Last summer, we did small group lessons virtually to try to get our staffing in alignment a little bit better. And that worked out quite well. We did not hold orchestra jumpstart camp last summer, but we were planning on that this summer. We did not hold choir camp last summer, but we are planning it again this summer, along with all of the band camps that we normally run. And high school, we also had the marching band that we usually do. And there's a summer jazz band that did not.
It was good to run last summer, but then of course it got canceled. But others did that back up. And driver's ed, the sessions will go right along with the high school summer school dates. And just as, as we have run it for many years in the past. And same with behind the wheel. I know last year the, the behind the wheel instructors really put in a significant amount of time because they were behind so far from the spring of all the kids that didn't get a chance to take behind the wheel. So once we got the approval from the Department of Health to do behind the wheel in person, that they really put a lot of time and effort in to get everybody through. And I think they did a really phenomenal job. So looking forward to that. Staffing, we're looking at the high school based on our, what we had the previous year when we were in person. It's pretty, going to be pretty similar. And same thing with K8. We're looking at spacing it off of the 219, 2018 summer schools.
Right. And a key thing to remember about staffing is if we don't have the course enrollment and we don't have the students, we don't do the staffing with it. So when you, when you look at the numbers that are up there, that's really based on projected, but we hire, we hire and bring in staff based on student enrollments. So this was the proposed summers, this is, this is the proposed summer school pay model. And we are proposing that we continue with this. This was board approved back in the summer of 2018 was when we put this into place with, once again, with the goal of getting up to 100% of our Oshkosh, you know, staffing with 100, with 100% of our school district staff. And we, and we did that. And we really want to, we wanted to honor at the time also the stipend for summer school principals and our extended school year coordinator. Because I, what I don't think everybody understands is that it may be like a four-week or, you know, 16 days in the summer for, you know, K through eight or, you know, the X number of days for high school. But summer school and the planning, the reporting and everything that goes along with it, case management, getting everything ready for extended school year actually goes all year long. And so there may be times of a lot more workload, but we are really working, like we've been working on this for a while. So that's the stipend. Here are timelines. So we're already off and, and running with our timelines. New course proposals were due on Monday. If there were going to be anything like at the K8 level, if we were going to look at any enrichments. Communication's going to go out on the 15th. We're already working through that and our course guides and our information. So the week of the 20th is when everything's going to be released out to families. It'll go home. They will get the information. And then the, the infinite campus registration window will open on March 1st at 8:00 AM, the online registration. We will have, now I think this is less relevant now, but because students all have their devices, but they will be available and we will assist any families that need help with registration. And then at any time, a principal, people services teachers, we can absolutely recommend and get students enrolled at a later time based on their needs for literacy and math support. So, and then we are hoping to have all of our enrollments and staff notified and ready to go with their teaching assignments in late April or early May. We do absolutely have non-OASD families do that. And so we will have, the summer school secretary will help with that. Families will complete everything through parent portal. We will send out course confirmations in May. That actually was pretty successful. We already know when we're having our all summer school staff meeting. And we are tentatively going to have our summer school open houses for K8 on June 9. And that is our summer school review and preview.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Better than I thought it would be. The numbers from last summer.
I just wondered around those sport camps. How you get kids to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning?
Well, I can tell you, some of it is based on what they've also got going on during the day. They offer that because with regards to some of the other summer school offerings, especially incoming freshmen with health starts at, you know, 8 o'clock in the morning. So it's their opportunity if, if they want to do both, you know, and then health is four and a half hours long. So they can't go to any other sessions. So it does open it up for.
And a lot of sports that are involved in, you have to do camps. And it's kind of by grade level sometimes.
Yeah, it's, it's, but they get pretty good, they get pretty good, they get pretty good enrollment for the six-day sessions. Yep.
Other questions or comments? I do have a question about the K, 4K8 summer school dates. We often hear in a non-COVID environment about summer slide. And I'm sure we're going to hear more about COVID slide moving forward. I'm just wondering if we have thought about perhaps adding an, an additional week to the 4K program because this, this projection says we would end that on July 8th, which means students wouldn't be reporting to school in the fall for probably another six weeks. And I'm just concerned about that COVID slide and the summer slide and wonder. And I'm just concerned about that COVID slide and the summer slide and wonder perhaps adding a week. I know that that's more cost, it's more planning and more everything. But putting students first doesn't make sense to do that, I guess is what I'm asking.
Right. So in actually last, was it last spring? Yes. Doris did do a survey of staff as far as like, because we wanted to know, how does this work? Because the whole key behind this is we have to have staff available to be able to work with kids, right? So that's like first. And then families are going to either have the need or the want to participate as well. And so we started with staff and so taking a look at that, when they were available, when they were planning their, you know, vacations, their times, their professional development, college, whatever's going on, the overwhelming thing was that they felt like they absolutely could commit and manage that for, do you want to say the four-week window? Five-week was pushing it. So, and we did, we actually did survey staff with that in the spring to take a look at that. The other piece to keep in mind is, is that when we're doing this, then also you have to remember there's other things that are ramping up to get schools started. So it's like we're trying to, it's this balance between how do we provide the services that our kids need at the same time? And the other thing is, is that kids also, when we're back to a more quote-unquote "normal" and, you know, ceilings going and students are able to participate and all those things from like the rec department and other things, are they going to have the opportunity to also participate? So it's the balance between those two, trying to do that. So staffing is the key behind that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Well, thank you very much. I know that, well, it's called summer school. I understand that it's a year-round operation in terms of planning and getting everything in order. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you so much.
All right, next we will move on to the consent resolution agenda. For the agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. Is there anyone who wanted to pull any of the items on the consent agenda? All right, then. The board will consider approval of one legislative platform approval. Number two, Neola policy updates. A, 3131, reduction in staff. B, 20, excuse me, 3231, outside activities of professional staff. C, 4130, assignment and transfer. D, 4131, reduction in staff. E, 4231, outside activities of support staff. F, 7440.03, small unmanned aircraft systems, drone, new. And G, 7441, unmanned aircraft drones, delete. Section three, new policies. A, 1630.02, Ashkash Area School District sponsored COVID-related leave. B, 3430.02, Ashkash Area School District sponsored COVID-related leave. And C, 4430.02, Ashkash Area School District sponsored COVID-related leave.
So moved. Second?
Please call the roll.
Burzog?
Yes, aye.
Olstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Selaji?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So we have no individually considered resolutions. Are there any requests for future agenda items?
I have one.
Doctor, excuse me, Mrs. Olstead, Dr. Olstead.
I have a question I'd like to ask the opinion of the board. With the, with the statement that we put out last week, we said we would review the policy and process for bringing complaints to the school board. Do you want that to be kind of full board immediately? Or do you want me to bring that to the P and G Policy Governance Meeting first, like we normally do? P and G first?
Yeah.
Excellent, okay.
Normal process.
Yep, normal process, that's what I thought. Just wanted to make sure. Okay. All right, that's it. Okay, very good.
And we talked about reviewing the matrix. We wanted administration to bring that back as a future agenda item, correct? We talked about that earlier in this meeting?
Yeah.
About three hours ago.
Looking at it, yeah.
Mr. Heschel?
What wasn't clear to me was whether we wanted to do that at a special meeting or if we wanted that to come back to us at our next regularly scheduled meeting. Because there was some talk about having a special meeting to address that.
Well, we do have a special meeting next week as defined and that's our annual meeting with the city council or the common council and the school board. I believe that's a virtual meeting. That possibly could be on that agenda, I suppose. I don't.
You could potentially have two separate special meetings.
That's true.
Because one is a combined meeting and then the board have a separate special meeting.
Okay. Maybe we could leave that up to Dr. Cartwright and that, that's just a week away. That's five workdays away and it would have to be noticed. So we'd have to make sure that Dr. Cartwright and administration have ample time to prepare that.
Yeah, I'm fine with it coming at the 27th meeting or, you know, the last meeting of the month too, or if we want to do a separate one. I would just ask, I know that we're doing, so our next, our meeting next Wednesday night is a virtual meeting, right? With the common council. Are we all coming here or are we doing it all at home? I'm not coming here. Right. So then if we do a special meeting for this, I would refer it in person. So I don't know that I want to do another virtual meeting. You know what I mean?
Agreed, yeah.
I want to keep consistent with what we always do. And so I don't know that having a special meeting after a special meeting next week and they're both being virtual is appropriate. I think we should be here for our special meeting.
What we can do is we can make arrangements for the boardroom to be available for those who would like to participate from the, via the boardroom. The rationale behind that is because of when you're in Zoom, the difficulties in communication when you're in a big room. And by having your laptops, when you're talking, you're able to do that. We would just need to make sure that everybody is muting at the appropriate time so that when you're speaking, everyone else is muted and then you unmute. That way it doesn't give the feedback, but we could accommodate that. In other words, if the board wants to come into the boardroom, but do it virtual or if you prefer, do it virtual somewhere else and then we come back. So we can accommodate that.
I think the real question is, do we feel that that's an important enough issue that we want to tackle that earlier than our normal schedule of doing stuff? So I think that's what we're kind of asking the board of, do we want to have a special meeting next week? Or do we want to push that topic to the 27th?
I would formally request that we give as much time available to our staff to potentially transition to any potential direction that the board would like to proceed in the future. And so if we can give them that gift of time for any potential decisions that the board could be making, that would be highly appreciated.
You'd rather do it sooner.
You'd rather do it sooner. No.
No, later.
No, sooner, so that once a decision is made, whatever that decision is, the staff have information more readily available to them sooner rather than later.
So are you suggesting that this, that meeting would be next week Wednesday?
Or another day.
Or another time?
We can always pull, you know, survey the board to find out what availability is, yes.
Let's just pull the board, survey the board.
And so what are we meeting on? We're, the matrix?
The matrix, yes. Okay, is that, we have consensus and understanding around that?
I have to be lighthearted because every time we say the matrix, the movie just comes to my head.
I know.
So just to bring some levity or, you know, some humor to this a little bit, you know, that pops into my head at that point.
We did strongly consider trying to change the verbiage of that. However, for consistency purposes, since we've been calling that since day one was the only reason we stuck with it.
It's got Keanu Reeves in my head.
Okay, so are we good on that?
Yep.
That agenda item, okay. Any other future agenda items? Announcements? Does anyone have an announcement? I just want to share, I do want to share an announcement tonight. I believe many of the board, all of the board members have received some emails late this afternoon, starting around 3 o'clock. And there seems to be some confusion out there, so I just want to clarify. Every Wisconsin school district typically has a closed session in the month of January under Wisconsin statute 19.85 per N1 per NC in order to discuss renewal of administrative contracts in order to comply with state laws. No contracts will be voted on tonight. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for one, considering the employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises authority under Wisconsin statute 19.85 per N1 per NC. A, contract renewals for administrators, and B, superintendent evaluation slash contract.
So moved.
Please call the roll.
Olstead?
Aye.
Heschel?
Aye.
Selaji?
Aye.
Harlan?
Aye.
Evans?
Aye.
Garner?
Aye.
Burzog?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned to executive session.
All right, we're going to take until about 10 to 9.